Hit it on the second here. Okay, welcome to the Tuesday, March 6th, meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. We have a full complement here, so we'll call this meeting to order. Could we please have a moment of silence? Okay, thank you very much. Please rise, face the flag, and begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any planning commissioner announcements? Richard?
This year, April 1st, there's going to be Easter at the Rock, and it's an invite, we're there from about 4:30 or 5 o'clock in the morning. So if you're just going out surfing, come by, get some hot coffee or tea and a bagel or muffin and go in the water or have some when you come out. And also, there's a Cal workshop meeting this weekend at the end of Morro Bay, and I think it's at 1 o'clock. You could verify that at the Cal email.
Richard, what's the Cal?
Citizens for Affordable Living, and they're going to be addressing some of the 218 issues regarding the water reclamation facility, and they're having a workshop there and discussing that project.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we'll open the meeting for public comment. This is for any members of the audience wishing to discuss items that are not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes. If, please, come forward and state your name.
Good evening. My name's Betty Winholtz, and I cannot stay because I need to go back to work, so I'd like to address your very last item on the agenda, which is about your Harbor Advisory Planning Commission, a joint meeting, and the results of your discussions on Measure D and the working waterfront. So what I would like to say is that I feel like your definitions align with Measure D in the first half of that document. I appreciate, I don't know if they clarify, but they articulate certainly a little bit more with those, the word "primary" means, and the other word after that, the A, B, and C. What I would like to address, though, and take a little exception to, is the working waterfront, last half of it. It defines three zones: the fisheries, which is Measure D, which absolutely is correct; then it defines the next zone as being visitor-serving, which is fine because it's from Beach Down to the Mariner Park; and then it talks about a commercial zone, which goes down past the Mariner Park, all the way down to State Park. My concern about that is that that is all residential area on land, and even though you talk about commercial on the water, the only commercial thing that's happening in that area right now is the little boat haul-out. There is a marina, a private marina, just north of State Park, but I don't know if those are live-boards or if it's more like a storage where people come and park their boats and take them out once in a while. So whether that's really commercial or residential, I don't know, and maybe you would know and you could ask. I don't see how going all the way down to the State Park Marina is considered commercial when that's really a state park, so I would think it should be zoned recreational. And so I'm having issue with that piece. Pretty much everything else seems to be fine, and so I just wanted to put in those two cents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other members?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gordon Fox. I own a home at 255 Bradley Avenue. The reason I've come today is really not so much a comment as a question. I own a lot that's really quite close, about a block away. It's on Scott Street, and it falls within a C2 commercial zone, and it's also overlaid by the Beach Street Specific Area Plan. And during some conversations with a person at the planning department, I came to realize that we are beginning to review some of the zoning in the city, and my question is, how does one go about finding out what is being reviewed, how the timeline is going on, and will it or will it not affect the property that I have and the possible uses for it?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any other members of the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission here, and Scott, would you like to address the last speaker?
Sure. Mr. Fox, you can either call and get in contact with me, Scott Graham, the Community Development Director, or Cindy, sitting here next to me, Jason. Either one of us could provide you information related to the proposed land use changes that are going on as it relates to the land use element of the general plan and what that will look like pushing out through the actual zoning of the property. So if you get in contact with one of us, we can walk you through that. Our contact information is on the website under the Community Development Department. Both of our phone numbers are there, and email addresses.
Okay. Now, I'll just mention on the other public comment that the southern portion of the waterfront zone is as commercial. There are several parcels there that are commercial and historically have been commercial, even though they are in residential use right now. So the commercial zone does not preclude residential use, so I think it's still, well, we'll get into this discussion, but I think it's still appropriate for the designation to stay the same. So we'll have that discussion later in the evening, too. Okay, so moving on from public comment, presentations, we have none. Consent calendar, we have one item. Does anybody wish to discuss anything on the consent calendar? Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearings, we have B1 is our first case, UPO-480, and CPO-543. Site location is 301 Seashell Cove in Morro Bay. Can we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Chairperson Luer and members of the Planning Commission. This item is 301 Seashell Cove. This is an item that the Planning Commission previously reviewed on December 19th of last year. It was continued to a date uncertain at that time. The Planning Commission provided comments, feedback, and direction to the applicant. After the meeting, staff sent an after-action letter to the applicant with direction to revise plans consistent with the direction of the Planning Commission. Those plans have since been revised and resubmitted to staff, and now it is back before you as a duly noticed public hearing to consider and take action on the permit request. My presentation will go through some of the changes that are before you now. So this is a single-family home. It is on Lot 1 of the Seashell Estates subdivision. The vicinity map there on the screen shows you that it is located north of Highway 1, adjacent to the Bayside Care Center off of Teresa Road. The home is proposed at 2118 square feet with a 580-square-foot garage. It is slightly smaller than what you saw in the December public review. At that time, it was approximately 2,700 square feet. The comments that the Planning Commission had for the applicant are in the after-action letter, which is Exhibit B of your staff report. I have them on the screen here. There were 10 items, some a little bit more complex than others, some pretty simple. Item number seven on this list says applicant-proposed Condition 25. That's really no longer applicable because that was just the applicant back in December asking for approval that night, and so that's no longer applicable. The biggest change, and which is what caused the home to be reduced in size, is a previous presentation regarding the encroachment into the development limit line, and there, at that time, was an encroachment of approximately four feet, and as I walk through the slides, I'll be able to show you how the home has been revised. All of the areas in black are items that, as presented in the staff report, are items that have been revised and corrected, consistent with the Planning Commission feedback and direction. The items in red are items that staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review and provide consensus direction on, as staff is recommending, changes to that. Here's the site plan, and as, looks pretty, okay, I don't think we have a red circle here. It's getting faint. Okay. Okay. All righty. We'll walk you through this here. So here's the original site plan, which showed the home, oh, it doesn't work, okay. Doesn't like that screen. There you go. So the original home was set back from the street approximately 20 feet with the revised changes to avoid that four-foot encroachment into the development limit line, which is area that would be reserved for open space after development of the home. The home has been pushed back four feet and now has an approximately 24-foot setback. That was accomplished by decreasing the size of some of the homes. Here you'll see the original floor plan and the revised floor plan. The biggest change to the street is the location of the front door. It was originally perpendicular to the street, and now it's parallel to the street. Very little elevation changes to the home. In the original elevation on the top of the screen, you can see behind the tree here that the front door, as I said, is perpendicular, where now it is parallel. Second, let me catch up here with my notes. In the east elevation, in addition to the front door change, some of the other direction from the Planning Commission was regarding the patio and deck roofing and the angled posts. The Planning Commission expressed support for that, and the applicant has chosen to keep that in, as they originally proposed that. Just wanted to point that out. That is shown in the elevation. In the original and revised north elevation, there was item number three on the after-action letter, was regarding the fencing. You will see that that has now been changed. In the original and revised south elevation, there are changes. The applicant has now added solar panels, which are visible here, and they were not in the original proposal. And then again, the west elevation, which is largely the same. So moving on to that first item that was in red on an earlier slide, is the issue with the driveway width. In this situation, the applicant is proposing a wider driveway than the guidelines allow. They are proposing the driveway at 20 feet. This was discussed in the December staff report. The applicant is also proposing a four-foot level sidewalk extension behind the curb. Staff's recommendation remains unchanged from the December staff report, which is that, which is reflected in Planning Condition 18, which is to reduce the driveway width. The design guideline, excuse me, the design guidelines for Seashell Estate do not allow for modification by owner. It says that driveways shall be the same width as the curb openings, not including the transitions unless authorized by the city adjacent property owner and adjacent property owner. Staff's position is that the driveway should match the curb opening minus the transition areas. From there, the driveway can widen to the maximum width of 20 feet versus starting out at 20 feet from the curb. And you see this here, where here is the driveway curb and the transition area, but yet the driveway starts at the curb at that 20-foot. Revising the plans to meet the standard will not impact the ability of cars to park in the driveway nor exit from the driveway. And just to clarify, in the staff report, it said Planning Condition 18, but that was a typo, and it's actually 19. Another point of consideration for the Planning Commission is the curb sidewalk removal. In this situation, the applicant is stating that this is consistent with the Design Guideline Manual. Because these homes are going to be built one at a time, and it is not a subdivision that all 10 homes will be built at, the Planning Commission should consider, excuse me, adding a condition where all of the homes would have sidewalks or none of the homes would have sidewalks. It would not be consistent with the design to allow the individual owners to choose whether or not they're going to have sidewalks. The second item in red is the ESHA, and in this area, the discussion of the Planning Commission last December was regarding ensuring the integrity with protecting of the ESHA or environmentally sensitive habitat. You will see that in your revised resolution, that that is reflected, as Planning Conditions both 17 and 20 address this topic, and staff recommends that they remain on the project to ensure compliance with our LCP policies on ESHA. And landscape plans. Landscape plans have been revised to reflect better screening. PC direction was to tie the plant list to the site plan. At the time that the staff report was published, the site plan, although all of the plans were identified, they still did not tie to the site plan. After the staff report was published, and this is mentioned in the staff report, the applicant's representative submitted a revised landscape plan. I place that as an 11 by 17 on the dais before you. There are also copies at the public table for the public to view. And so this plan dated today, received today, excuse me, shows this identification. And here is an image of that, which identifies the plant species and plant types. Staff's recommendation is to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 0618, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for the project depicted on site development plans dated February 5th, 2018. And then, of course, with the exception that the revised landscape plan was received today, March 6th, 2018. And one other clarification, the staff report on the title page references the staff recommendation as being for plans dated December 1, 2017, and that was also a typo, my apologies. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. At this point, let's go through, do we have any ex parte communication to disclose? Okay, do we have any questions for staff? Michael, are you ready to go?
I guess the biggest question I have is, this is the owner coming forward with their first project. With the nature of things like the driveway width and the sidewalks relative to the original plans that were brought forward, where's, do we have discretion to change what were portions of the original subdivision kind of thinking?
So with the driveway, that was a tract condition, so there wouldn't be no discretion to change that because it would require amending the tract permit.
So if we would say that it's all right for us, if we would be favorable, they still have to go through that process?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I got.
Richard?
Cindy, I went and took another closer look, and my only concern is the ESHA setback. You mentioned something in your presentation about the LCPI. Is that in the resolution or am I missing?
Yes, it is. It's both Planning Conditions 17 and 20, and let me, so, and specifically 17, because that's where we're saying that they would be required to survey and stake it by a licensed land surveyor, and that would be correlated with the biologist who would certify the precise delineation of what is ESHA. In the applicant's response, which is Exhibit C of your staff report, they made a statement that they would have a certification by the biologist. Staff's position is that we need more than a certification. This would be, you know, certified and staked by a licensed land surveyor, so it would precisely delineate that, and we've done it that way with other projects in the city, too.
Yeah, because in this, being that this is kind of such precedent, you know, in how this is gonna, this area is gonna develop, you know how sometimes in this city, not, you know, historically, we had the ESHA was, you know, this and that. Is this gonna help? Is this gonna, do you guys see this as it, those setbacks, those bluffs, are they gonna, when they survey it, they just survey up their property? But what I'm getting at is continuity, yeah?
So they'll survey it just for this particular property, this APN, you know, this legal property. When Lot 2 comes in to be developed, they'll have the same requirement. They'll need to stake the ESHA. If Lot 2 doesn't get developed for five years and there are biological changes out on the site, they will be assessing it in real time. So, you know, ESHA can be dynamic. It can, you know, depending on, you know, environmental, you know, changes, it can change, but it'll always be that real-time info as that discretionary permit is approved. And, I mean, it is precedent-setting, but for this lot. So, you know, Lot 2 will have its own, but they'll be subject to the same policies. If that clarifies.
Joe? With respect to the sidewalks, I suspect it's a little too early in the development of that whole area to make a definite decision, but is there a mechanism in the plan to address whether there should be some sidewalks or sidewalks for all of the homes sometime in the future? I mean, is there any provision for that?
It's an interesting question. Looking through the resolution, there was actually a condition that required there to be a sidewalk all the way around it, and that condition was stricken. And there was some indication, and I'm sure the applicant's representative, Kathy Novak, when she gets up, will speak to it, that there was some allowance potentially for sidewalks in the design requirements, and I've been thumbing through them as Cindy was presenting it to see if I could find that, because I don't see where that's located. I did find the section that speaks to the driveway width being the same as the curb cut minus the transition, that's the wings. So that's the condition that Cindy referred to previously. So typically, you would have the driveway pan going up, and then as you came into the lot, it would transition out to that 20-foot width, you know, maximum width for the driveway. But I'm not seeing the, yeah, you can have sidewalks on that side, so I'm still looking at them. And perhaps Kathy might be able to cite the section when she gets up, if she's aware of it.
Jesse, do you have any questions? Okay, I don't have any questions at this time. So we'll open the meeting for public comment, and would the applicant like to say something?
Good evening, Chair Luer and Commissioners. My name is Kathy Novak from Novak Consulting, and I'm here tonight representing the Seashell Estates project. Staff has provided a detailed report and updates on the after-action items since your last Planning Commission meeting, so I'll simply say that the applicant is in concurrence with proposed changes and conditions of approval, as noted by staff tonight. I do have one comment for the Planning Condition Number 18, which is in regards to the driveway width. I actually do have a couple of comments on that, based on your conversation. But the applicant is willing to reduce the driveway apron by four feet and describe in the condition of approval. However, we want to go on record that we are doing this at the city's request, since this is an ADA accessible feature, and we do not want to incur any problems at the time of the building permit or in the future. This requirement is also not in conformance with the city's typical driveway standard Number B6. And while I'm talking about the driveway for a minute, we're not proposing a sidewalk. What we're proposing is a four-foot apron around the driveway for accessibility. If somebody wants to put in some gravel pathway or something that would be leading to that apron, they can do that, but we're not proposing actual sidewalks in this location. When the city council was approving this project, it was approved with just the four-foot sidewalk on the opposite side of the cul-de-sac, and the reason being is that they all decided that this is 10 homes, and we're not going to be seeing a lot of pedestrian traffic walking up and down the cul-de-sac, so there doesn't, didn't need to have four-foot sidewalks wrapped all the way around the cul-de-sac. And then the council at the time felt that the four-foot wide on the other side was fine, and they just thought it would, and actually, I think we're going to be proposing a decomposed granite because we were trying to reduce the pervious surfaces over there. So we're not looking at the proposed sidewalks on this side of the street. It's just, it could be a pathway in the future for somebody, and then the ADA accessibility around the driveway entrance. That basically, oh, I do have one comment for you, Richard, on the ESHA setbacks. The way that we determine the rear building envelope for this current proposed plan was, we sent the project biologist out to stake the area for the ESHA, and then followed up by him was the project surveyor that came out and recorded the spots that the project biologist had staked to delineate the ESHA boundary. So the one, the current plan that you see right now was done, just as the condition would be saying for the future for the other ones, we've already done that for this one. So I just want to let you know that it's already been done. So we will follow up if we need to, infer any kind of documentation, but just so that you know we didn't just guess that the line out there is now. That concludes my presentation. The project architect is with me as well, so if you have any questions, we're happy to answer any questions, and we just ask for your support of this project tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comment from the public on this item? Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Joe?
Jesse?
Michael? Okay. Actually, I don't have any questions for you either, Kathy, so we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion, and we'll start with you again, Joe.
Let's see. The explanation of the sidewalk seems adequate to me. I think the position of the development office with respect to the driveway, I think I side with you guys. I think aesthetically, that's, you know, more appropriate. The thing that I was looking at was the landscape, and again, as Richard had said, this being the first of what could be 10 on the property, and it's so difficult, one, to know what the proposed landscape will look like, and then, two, what it will look like in a few years, and whether the citizens will be happy with what that's accomplished. I was wondering if we could see some kind of reexamination of the landscape plan, you know, a few years hence, to see if, this being the first one, to see if it's, you know, worked out the way everybody thought it was working out, and whether we should, you know, enact some changes or supplement it or something like that. Those are my thoughts.
Okay. Jesse?
No comments.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah, I guess, depending which way, chicken or egg, I'm satisfied with the fact that the thing was staked and recorded. It's not like Kathy was out there with a measuring stick, laying these things out. And it's definitely to the owner's benefit to maintain the ESHA at the highest level because the selling point of this level, because the, the selling point of this particular corner property is going to be the quality of that ESHA to the west. I think that's, that's a major, major selling point. So there's no, there's no point in trying to degrade the ESHA at all. It's to everybody's advantage, the community and the property owner eventually, to have that ESHA at full capacity. My recollection when this came through is, is I was looking for every way possible to make that street narrower, to not have as much paving as possible, and I think the, the fire marshal wanted to have the giant truck be able to turn cartwheels on the cul-de-sac. And so we've got like a four-car width road, and I don't see any purpose in adding sidewalk. I mean, if this was one of the streets, like to one of the schools, absolutely, but it's, it's a, it's a, there's nothing going to be extended up that way, so I'm fine with that. And the driveway, to me, it's another selling point of the property, and if that's the way the thing was deeded in the first place and it wants to be changed or however, it doesn't bother me that the driveway is wider, because I do think we don't want people parking on the street, we want them parking in the driveway. So if the driveway or, or its perimeter needs to, to get a little larger to do that, we've got a very large property that is going to be, you know, it's, it's a building sitting on a pretty open site that's going to have a very intimate landscape around it, and I think it's, again, to the owner, developers, best interest to do it right so that it works. So I'm, I'm okay with the request for the additional width there. However, technically, it has to be resolved. I'll throw that back to...
Okay, Richard?
Yeah, I, I think, I think you guys did a really nice job on this one, coming back. And my question regarding the ESHA has been answered. I, I just want to just make a note, you know, that we have to be very conscientious, because sometimes when you see something like with regards to ESHA and these kind of buffer zones, it's sometimes hard to visualize what's going to happen. And what, what is coming to me, to my mind, was I was riding my bike the other day on Beach Comer, and I looked over on Osos Street, and you know that project that is on Osos? There is a project that we have, and then there's that bank that, you know, they're being put in. To me, I kind of flashback to like a Ventura, you know, when we used to test, you know? And I just wanted to, Jesse mentioned it, you know, like, I think Commissioner Lucas always could articulate better, but, you know, articulating the importance of ESHA, not only for the owner, but for the city and for the residents.
Okay. Well, I appreciate Kathy complying with the, the planning conditions from the, from staff, and I think this is going to be a pretty, pretty nice project, and also the, having the pavers instead of, instead of concrete, I think that's going to make, make that project a lot more compatible. I still didn't, the one thing I still didn't see was, we were getting the extra green, green building features delineated in the staff report, and I didn't, didn't see that. Did I miss that? Because we were holding this subdivision to a higher standard.
Oh, okay. So they did add solar panels. The green building discussion at the last PC meeting was that, the consensus of the commission was that they would be tied to 25 percent, wait, 20, 25 percent above Title 24, but that we would tie it to the 2016 building code. And the applicant was fine with that.
Right. Was that, did you have a planning commission? Did you have a, a condition that was stated in, in our planning?
Yes, and that condition number is number nineteen.
Number nineteen?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I just missed it. Thank you.
Yeah, it kind of like wraps from one page to the other, so easy to miss.
Okay. I thought it was in the previous staff report, and I didn't see it in this one, so, okay. Then, I don't have any objections to this, and I think this is going to be a, a good subdivision. As far as the, having the landscape reviewed at a set time period, there, I think this landscapes tend to be organic and evolving over time, and I'm not sure how we would, how we would go back and reevaluate it at a two-year, five-year, or 10-year period, and what criteria we would use for that, Joe. So I don't think I really want to, I wouldn't want to impose that condition on this, this project.
If I might add, I, I think that as projects come forward, the landscaping out there will mature over time, and so you'll get to, I mean, I go by, I go right by every single project that comes through here, I go out to the site and look at it. I mean, you would be able to go out there if you were concerned about that, you know, looking at the palette that they're using and say, ah, that one's, looks pretty good, or that doesn't look good, and you'd be able to comment and apply that to future projects as they come forward. I mean, that's, that's oftentimes how it is, and in fact, I think we have some conditions in here, because the tract had planting requirements that some of the trees had died out there and things. We have some requirements, they put some of those back in, in conjunction with this project. So we did, we kind of took that, this is, I think this is Whitney, you know, I recall the conversation with Whitney when she was here about that, and looking at some of the trees that were planted and make it, and so we said, oh, they got to go back and plant that, and we used this as a trigger to do that. So certainly, it could be that way for future projects as they come forward. We could look at the palette that way.
And it's condition 11, by the way, that we're just referencing, the, the tract landscaping.
Okay. And it is, they are conditioned to, for upkeep and maintenance and replacement of... So, Joe, do you have any?
Well, yeah, and I'm, this really isn't a sticking point for me. I was just thinking that this, this first project is perhaps one of the two or three lots it's most visible to, and, you know, we, it merited extra attention to make sure we, we got this lot right. That's the only reason I was thinking about it, but, you know, it's, it's not, it's not essential. You know, in response to your thought, I don't really know how you would evaluate it other than, you know, going back to the original intent, which is to accomplish a certain amount of screening, and to a reasonable person, there was sufficient screening, that would be fine, or if it became apparent, and I would imagine it would become apparent to the applicant, and he'd probably be joined with us, that if the screening was inadequate, that they would probably want to do something in addition as well. So I, I don't have an extreme concern about that. Oh, but there is one thing I wanted to say. At the last meeting, at the meeting when we, we talked about this, I was mistaken, and I thought that the, that the narrowing of the driveway by the apron would somehow reduce the capacity of parking cars on the driveway, and I, and I was told that it really doesn't. So, so we could actually adhere to the, to the plans notion of what the driveway entrance should look like and still not make it more inconvenient for, for using the driveway for parking. Is that correct?
Yeah, they, they can basically flare out to the 20-foot width once they get on, you know, once they get into the site, you know, off the, off the trend. There's not, not really an issue with that. I mean, you get, you get up to the width, and you can park cars side by side on the driveway, and, yeah, I mean, it shouldn't be an issue at all. It's, it's not really all that constraining, quite frankly.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion? Somebody speak up here.
I move that we accept, we adopt Resolution 06 dash what, 118, rather, dash 18 concerning conditional use permit, CPO 543 and UPO dash 480 as drafted.
Okay. Do we need to amend the, the date on that Item A, on the recommendations for the, the date on the, the plans?
Not on the staff report, but standard condition one references an earlier date. So standard condition one, there are two January dates there, and those would be reflected, those would be updated to, in the staff report dated February 28th, 2018, for plans dated February 5th, 2018.
Okay. Do you want to include that in your motion?
As staff recommended.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to also echo Jerry's opinion. I think it's beautiful to see a nice understated project. This is, this is very simple, and I think it's a great, great project.
Okay. Can we call the, call the vote?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Barone?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Aye.
Chairperson Lure?
Yes.
Motion passed as 5-0.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to Item B two, amendment A 00, or AOO, dash 052 to CUP 1692. This is a, a site location is 885 in Barkadero, Moro Bay, formerly, you know, formerly, I guess, or currently known as the Otter Rock Cafe.
We're going to switch presentations here and jump right in.
Before we, while they're doing that, do we have any ex parte communications to declare?
Thank you for allowing me to get ready there. This is Agenda Item B two. It's 885 in Barkadero, also known as City Lease Site 90 and 90W. It is the remodel and renovation of the Otter Rock Restaurant Building, commercial edition, deck repair, and floating dock. It is a precise plan amendment to the lease site's conditional use permit, which was previously approved in 1992 and amended at multiple times later in the 1990s, as explained in your staff report. The request for the amendment of the CUP, as I stated, would renovate the existing commercial restaurant at the site. No changes are proposed to the existing retail that is on the street side of the building. It would also enclose an existing 157 square feet of outdoor rear patio area, an addition of 327 square feet at the building front, make certain proposed roofing and facade changes. The project also includes deck repair under the existing bayside lateral access on the west side of the building, as well as replace and relocate the existing floating dock, and expansion of the water lease size in order to accommodate the waterside improvements. The presentation I have for you, we'll walk you through some of these proposed changes. This is a visual simulation that's shown on the first page of the project plans, which are Exhibit D to the staff report. The proposed remodel would retain the original building character, repaint it a pale yellow, but retain the rock look, Otter Rock look. In this image here... Bad joke, stop. Sorry about that. In this image here, you can see the proposed addition. Important to note that with this front addition, it would remove the existing water wheel feature that is currently on site, and at this restaurant, the building's existing trash enclosure container is currently inside the building, just inside in the, in the reception area. That would relocate it outside to make for a more enjoyable hostess reception check-in area. The zoning in this, for this project is waterfront, planned development, and S4. This project is also located in the original jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission, and pursuant to our LCP, the project would also be required to obtain their coastal development permit prior to issuance of a building permit. That is reflected as one of the conditions in the resolution. Here's an existing site plan of the building. In this image here, you see the existing area. These shaded areas are, are outdoor areas, and this shows you how the outdoor area gets smaller with the addition of the 300-some square feet that I just mentioned. In the back of the building, this is the 157-square-foot rear patio area that would be enclosed, and you can see that, that would be changed out. The project's proposing that wall to be reconstructed with a panel of windows along the entire west elevation, and then the dock work, it is currently approximately 60 feet long. The reconstructed dock would require a removal of two pilings and installation of one new piling to support the new dock, and it would also be pushed out 23 feet westward in this location there, slightly shorter at about 42 feet. The project is designed to dovetail in with the Boatyard Project, which is a conditional use permit that the Planning Commission reviewed and approved in May of 2017. These two projects would be reviewed by the Coastal Commission at the same time, and we, pending the city's review and decision on this permit request, we did get, talked to Coastal Commission staff today, and they confirmed that they, their plan is to look at these two lease sites together, Otter Rock, which is Lease Site 90, and the Boatyard Project to the south, Lease Site 89. This is just an image for the Planning Commission's reference. This shows the existing 10-foot bayside lateral access. They are proposing some deck repairs underneath the access in order to support the seawall and other framing members. That is shown on your plans that are Exhibit D. Here's the existing floor plan. There are currently some structures here. The existing building has had a long history in the city. It was, it is currently the site of a restaurant, retail shop, and then the existing floating dock. The amendment to CUP 1692 that the applicant is proposing to amend, that is a permit. The project in the 90s was originally approved as a takeout restaurant with this area here, which is currently indoor, as a, it was a takeout restaurant, and this was an open-air area for the public to walk through with observation deck seating in this area. As identified in the staff report, the permit was amended several times over the years to first add a door to block the wind tunnel effect, then later to convert this area to indoor seating, and then, and then later to give approvals to the takeout restaurant to be converted to indoor sit-down restaurant, which is the approved use that you see today before you... So with that, there are multiple features inside the existing restaurant that give the appearance of an outdoor flair. If you've been inside the restaurant, it is currently closed for business. The remodel would clean up that area and give it more of a sit-down restaurant. There are no changes proposed for the kitchen or the existing retail area. They are proposing to remodel the bathrooms, some mechanical remodels, HVAC upgrades. The roofing would be redone to tie in to the new wall here, and then also to mitigate some of the impact of the multiple remodels over the years. I do have some simulations of the proposed elevation changes, but on this screen, you can see... can see the existing east elevation on the street where the water wheel is, and then here how that front facade would change. On the west elevation, you can see the existing windows here. There is a little bit of an alcove as you enter into the back door. There is a door, exiting door on the side there, on the south side of the elevation. In the revised elevation, this would be one long wall. That exiting door on the south would remain. Visual simulations, existing photo looking southwest, and then the proposed, existing and proposed. The project does meet the requirements for height for a single-story building on a lease size, lease site of this size, existing photo looking northwest, and proposed. There is a color change on the west side that would go away. And then existing photo northeast. You can see in the foreground, the Boatyard Project. The docks here are already approved to be replaced, and as I said, the Otter Rock Dock Replacement Project would tie in with the Boatyard, and the gangway access for the Otter Rock would be accessed through the Boatyard lease site. So this is existing and then proposed for simulations. The applicant has provided a color materials board, which is in the staff report and as well as in the project plans. Here are some samples of signage and lighting that they are proposing. This is taken from the project plans, also exhibit D. The exterior light fixtures, dark sky compliant, downward facing, shielded from above. There is an existing coastal access sign on the south side of the building as you're coming north from the Boatyard. There is not one on the northwest side of the building, and there, this sign would be added to reflect that that is coastal access. Also, in, as part of the project, they, during construction, which they anticipate would be a period of 45 days, they are proposing temporary access of that public access closure. It would only be the bayside. That would be closed. Public would still be allowed to walk up the length of the buildings, but would not be able to traverse on the west side of the building. As a restaurant remodel, the project does trigger additional parking requirements. The restaurant use itself is being expanded by about 484 square feet. Under our parking ordinance, that triggers additional, an additional 12 parking spaces. Currently, city council resolution allows parking aloofies to be waived for the first four spaces. The applicant has been conditioned in the resolution before you for the remaining eight spaces, and that is found at planning condition 13. As far as the environmental review and eelgrass for the dock work, there was an eelgrass survey performed for this site and found presence of no eelgrass at the site. However, planning condition 14 would require that, consistent with the Kemp requirements that the city adheres to, that they would be required to do a pre-construction eelgrass survey to confirm no presence of eelgrass. And based on the size, the project would be considered to be categorically exempt under CEQA. So therefore, staff's recommendation is to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 0518 for the project depicted on site plans dated December 22, 2017. With that, I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
I think this is probably for you. So the new dock structure, which is being pushed a little further out into the bay, I was assuming that you could park boats on either side of it, on the sort of the east side and the west side of the new dock structure? And the reason I was, and then, the reason I was asking was, was to ask, and if that's true, or even if it isn't true, is there any limitation on this, on the height of boats that you can park in front of these kind of enterprises?
I'm not aware of height limitations in our code for boats, so I will say that, yes, you would be able to park boats on both sides of this dock. The applicant's representative probably will have more information about this because it's the same representative for the Boatyard Project. They do wish to use this for, this dock slip for, I'm drawing a blank here, but, for, to use the, for mooring boats. I'm sorry. I'm completely drawing a blank right now, but yes.
Okay. Jesse?
So, a couple of questions I had, we talked a little bit about earlier. So the exiting, the, with that back exit being removed, it definitely looks like there would need to be an increase to the exit, the size of the exit that exists on the, would it be the south side of the building? Was there any analysis done, has there been an exiting analysis done yet? And is that exit distance going to work?
So, it's a good question, and we did conduct a site visit with the prospective leasee of the property and with their architect, Stephen Pulisic, and we did bring that issue up. And they had said they were going to, they were looking into it, and the plans reflected it might be okay. I don't know how far they went down the road, and he's not here, so not exactly sure. But they're aware of it, and we had this discussion while we were out there that, you know, they would be looking at it, and certainly, as normally be the case, we'll pick it up as part of the building review, or maybe the plan check.
Right. And my only concern becomes if it doesn't work there, it would be on the west elevation, which would significantly alter the out, well, the...
Yeah, they would have to make a change. You're correct. I mean, they would have to make a change to the design potentially if that was too far a distance. They didn't seem to think that was the case when the architect was down there and we were talking about it and walked over there. But whether they carried it further beyond at that, at this point, or we're just more concerned about getting the architectural drawings into us, because there's a fairly significant time crunch on the processing of this, of the application because of some negotiation between the applicant and the city.
Sure, sure. And the other question I had was in regards to the bathroom. So it occurred to me that, because I've, I've had, hey, I've hung out there before. Just to be quite frank. That, well, there's not enough bathrooms on a, on a regular Friday night, not Harborfest, not Avocado Margarita Festival. I mean, there's, there's a shortage of bathrooms in that area specifically at, you know, from the Otter Rock patrons. So it occurred to me how that has evolved, and that really made sense when Cindy was saying that, well, it started out as this and then grew and grew and grew. But it's, it's short by at least two, in my opinion. I mean, there needs to be at least another water closet in either bathroom. I know there's no room there, so I know that, I know the constraints.
The constraints would, would, if they had to put one in, they would have to alter slightly the configuration of the kitchen.
To put one in. And/or the, you know, the office or, or the, or the, you know, there's...
There's some options, I guess.
Being a, being a city lease site, I'm just bringing it up as, as a possible, you know, maybe we ought to look at it.
Yeah. Well, we will have to do the analysis once they give us the occupancy load.
Right. And just speaking frankly, I mean, it just, there's not enough.
Yeah.
Scott, let me follow up on his question about exits. The only existing exit I see proposed is to the south side, and that's exiting onto an adjacent property at the lot line. Is that a code-approved exit route?
They're lease sites, so they're not real property. So, so yeah, it is allowed. That's the public access way, so you can access with a door to that. There's no constraint there.
Okay. Even though they're separate lease sites?
Correct.
Or are those lease sites going to be conjoined?
The intent is that they're going to be under the same person.
But, but separate sites that could be sold separately in the future?
Lease separately, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
We have a fair amount of discretion when it comes to these types of things because we're the ones that issue the leases.
Right. Okay. I'm sorry, I jumped.
I don't have any questions yet, but we don't have a, or we're going to have an applicant?
Yeah, we were. Yeah. This is just questions for staff now. Okay. So that gets me back to questions for staff as far as the lease sites, and the, we have a, a dock with an access on an adjacent lease site. Do we have those lease sites, that adjacent lease site conditioned to allow access to that dock like an, like an easement we would have on a, on a fee, for a fee property?
I believe it's on previous permits. So originally, the way that the Otter Rock dock came to be is that many years ago, they actually wanted to have their own gangway and access to that existing dock, but their city records show that Coastal Commission actually changed the plan and required that they take access to that dock from the gangway at the Boatyard. And I believe the applicant's representative was, is also familiar with this little piece of city history, and could probably speak to it as well. So, but as to your direct question, there is no specific condition in tonight's resolution, but it has been covered in previous permits.
Okay. And then, on the, have you researched the closing in of that, of that walkway that, and are you confident that that has, that there wasn't, that wasn't an open space requirement that they were then allowed to put those, put that storefront there?
Yes. So when you say walkway, do you mean like the area that goes through the restaurant?
Right. Where it used to be an open, open access way, and then it got closed in with a window wall and...
Yeah. So there, that is an excellent question. Yes, we have researched that. And when the permit was, there was a major modification to the CUP in 1995, 1996, and there was specific discussion about that and an actual finding by the city that said, and this also was discussed at Coastal Commission too, that allowed them to extinguish the requirement for vertical access, and they no longer had to provide that open-air walkway through because they found that there was existing access to the bay within 100 feet of the site.
Okay.
So it's unusual in today's day and age. I, I've never come across a project like that, but it is specifically documented both in city records and in Coastal Commission records. So, and it is a narrow lease site. I mean, they would not be able to comply today without, you know, demolishing part of building.
Because it has a 70-foot height limitation, doesn't our waterfront master plan, specific plan, require a 30%?
Not on, not on a building of this tall. So the, the work that they're proposing is all at 14 feet or under. There are portions of the structure that go to 17 feet, but we did look at that, and there is actually, it's not required to provide that vertical access. And quite frankly, they, the, the building goes from the whole entire width of the lease site.
Right.
So, based on the, the work that they're doing.
Okay.
It would require a major reconstruction.
Okay. We'll open this for public comment. Would the applicant like to step forward?
Good evening, Chair Luer and Commissioners. My name is Kathy Novak from Novak Consulting, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant for this project. He's unable to attend tonight, so he just asked me to let you know that the application and proposed project stands as on its own and is presented, as he's presenting it tonight. I wanted to address a couple of questions that came up that maybe would be helpful here too as well, and that is on the dockage. Yes, Joe, there will be docks. That's why the, the new floating dock is shorter in length than the existing one, so it allows for boats to be able to get on on the inside, so there will be dockage on both sides. There is no height limitation for boats because we have such a variety of different boats. A sailboat could have a very tall mast, could be a commercial fishing boat, so it'd be left up to the leasie, when he's leasing the dock space, whether he would want to put any kind of limitations on the boat size or the height of the boats. Maybe I can try to go back a little bit into the history part here to try to kind of blend a couple of different things together on the south exit into the Boatyard, and then also the opening in the rear. When the Otter Rock was built, and there was originally where you see the cutout in the rear of the building, that was where the original gangway was going down to the floating dock. So when they, in 2002, if I remember correctly, is when they came in and proposed to put the harbor walk on the back of the Otter Rock, and that's when the Coastal Commission came in and said, you know, we want the harbor walk back there, so you're going to have to take the gangway out. And then, at the time, they negotiated with the city, and there was one gentleman that had both lease sites originally. So at one time, then they ended up getting split and sold off, but they wanted to make, city wanted to make sure that the access for the floating dock at Otter Rock wasn't lost when the Boatyard complex was sold to somebody else. So that was written, and I believe that's still in the current lease now for the Boatyard that has to allow Otter Rock for the access for the gangway to go down to the floating dock. So that's how that whole kind of picture came up. And as far as the door, originally, with the rear, with the door in the rear cutout where the gangway used to be, the Otter Rock was limited to occupancy less than 49 people, and they wanted to exceed 49 people, so they worked with the fire department. The fire department says, well, you have to have an approved exit in order to be able to go in excess of 49 people in the restaurant. The fire department wouldn't accept the rear door that was leading out onto the gangway as an acceptable door for occupancy to exit in case of a fire. So the Otter Rock worked with the folks at the Boatyard and said, you know, we'd like to put in a door on the south side there so that these folks can exit out of the restaurant so that they could, the Otter Rock could get the occupancy level over 49. So they worked with the city. That actually was written in the master lease as well because the city felt that since it was crossing over lease lines and just exactly what you were trying to say, if it was two different people, you didn't want to lose that access. So the city went so far as to put that actual language in the master lease so that somebody can't, can't come along and close that door off and say, you can't step out of your lease site onto our car lease site. So that's been covered as well. So that's a little bit of history on that whole doors and gangways, and hopefully that answers some of the questions that, that came up. Thank you.
So let me ask a question while you're up there. So the access to the, the gangway, that easement restriction is on the master lease of the, of the Boatyard property?
Yes, and I'm pretty sure that's in the new master lease that Mr. Branch has put together with the city. I, you know, I'm trying to remember. I knew it was in the old one, and I'm pretty sure that it was carried through just so that there wasn't any problems with the access for the dock.
It's in the new.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, Kathy, don't go far. Okay. Questions for the applicant. Richard, do you want to start, or? Yeah, go ahead.
Kathy, maybe for myself, for clarity, okay? You're remodeling, you're going to increase the occupancy, correct? And I just want to understand, for, we're talking about emergency exit, yeah?
Well, the, a long time ago, when the Otter Rock wanted to increase its occupancy over 49 people, they had to install that door that went from the Otter Rock onto the Boatyard area. So that was done a long time ago, so the fire department, gosh, this was back like in the early 2000s or something. I'm, you're dredging up old memories of timeframes, but it was done, it was permitted, and it was done. So at the time, then the Otter Rock could have in excess of 49 occupants from a fire safety perspective. It didn't have anything to do with planning and the, the number of people in the tables and figuring out spaces for, for parking and things like that. It was all just fire department-driven at the time with a limit on the occupants.
Okay. So like, we're proposing going to have more occupants with this remodel, correct?
Well, it's hard to say. I mean, it's, it's going to be dependent on who opens the restaurant and what they're going to do as far as tables. They, they might like a little bit more space around the tables, and so we might not necessarily have as many occupants.
Oh, okay.
But right now, they comply with fire code to allow more than 49 occupants in the building right now.
Oh, okay.
Because they do have that exit on the south side. That was the key of, of getting more than 49 occupants to be allowed in the building by fire code.
Okay. Okay. I'm a little bit more clear now.
Yeah, sorry.
Michael?
Now, this is, I guess this is more of a question than comment, but it's not, not meant to be harsh. One of the things that really concerns me is the west elevation has no, there's no sign of life there. The windows are sealed. There's no door there now. It's a... It's a very flat facade. And so I think for this, it's fine, but if I could imagine the whole Embarcadero having that kind of no access, it, it kind of kills the life of the waterfront walkway. So I think this is a, this is a very limited set of distance along there. So I'm not that concerned about it. That's one point. The second point is, and I think the architect's done a great job of fixing the back of the building. One of the things that really concerns me, and since you represent a lot of these folks, this is something I think is a technical issue. You know, the building codes are being driven with Title 24 toward more and more capability to reject heat coming in so we don't have to air condition as much. And so there's absolutely nothing on this west facade to keep the sun from coming in except the quality of the glass itself. And right now, technically, glass is getting amazing changes going on, but traditionally, all of the things that would have made this the reflective barrier would have meant more reflective glass. So in addition to it being kind of sealed off from human transaction through there, now it could, and I haven't, we haven't seen anything here, but if we're not careful, we're going to end up with a lot of mirrored surfaces there. And so we want to watch, I think in the waterfront master plan, it actually talks about transparency of our glazing. I know the signs, ordinances were, were talking about the transparency of storefronts. So that's the only thing that scares me here is, is there could be a technical solution to the permit energy issues that render this very reflective. And I don't think that's when we want on the waterfront. And unless you start to shade parts of it, it becomes more of a technical problem. So the larger aesthetic issue is reflectivity and, and human transaction along the walkway in general. But in specific, I think this one's fine. I think he's done a great job. It's a problem property. I don't, I won't miss the water wheel. And I think it's a, I think it's a good job otherwise.
Okay, well, thanks for the comments, and I'll make sure that I put note of that because it's helpful when I do have comments like that and I'm working on other projects that I can help folks and try to guide them in some of these little nuances or, you know, things to be watching for. It's always helpful. Thank you.
Okay, stay there Kathy, because I know, Joseph, do you have anything for Kathy?
Yeah, with respect, with respect to the trash receptacles, do you know, in the course of a night's operation, do they take trash through the dining area or do they wait till after hours to deposit it where currently is?
Currently where the trash enclosure? You know, I really don't know, Joe. I don't frequent there down at night, so I haven't seen anybody, what they do, so. But I would imagine that there's probably some use of the indoor. That's one reason why this project wants to put the enclosure outside so that it is not inside, as soon as you walk in the front door in the waiting area.
I'm not even sure really of the relevance of the question, but I, I imagine you can, you could tell us why it is that the only place to put the trash receptacles is out in the front of the restaurant? Because I'm, I'm assuming that the restaurant operator, if there was another way to do it, he, he would want to do it rather than putting it at his front door, but there's, there's no...
Right, the biggest thing is trying to get the roll offs from the rear of the property, if they're there, toward the front when it comes to the trash day. That's the biggest one. And then, so where you see the wood takeoff, that's the Anderson's lease site. So if we were to try to put a trash can over on the rear of this one, they would technically have to go across the neighboring lease site, run their trash can out through their driveway and then out to the front. So it's very problematic here. That's why you typically find most of these projects that try to put the cans out toward the front someplace so it's easy to, because you don't have to push these big things around. And then if they have liquid or something and they, and they drip along the harbor walk or wherever they're getting pushed to, they try to eliminate, you know, how far they have to push them and any liquid dropping.
So, so I would imagine, because they're currently inside the restaurant, that they're really pretty adequately sealed so that odors aren't coming out of them now, so we'd have the same kind of assurance if they were out in front. And then it would only be a matter of just sort of screening so that the public doesn't see the receptacles. That's it, yeah. Okay.
Jesse? Any questions for Kathy?
Just a couple. Well, more of a comment, should I wait?
Let's wait. Okay, Kathy, I got a couple, couple items that you may be able to help me with. I don't understand the material change in that storefront area of why it went to horizontal board, more of a contemporary look and metal frame horizontal board rather than keeping with the, the rock veneer. I don't think it's appropriate and it doesn't show anywhere else on that front facade. So what was the, do you have any idea on the thinking on that?
Well, I think really that the, the front door that was being put in, the applicant really wanted to make it a little more elegant looking, coming into the front area there. So that's what he was...
More so, more so the screening on the, the trash enclosures. I can see it on the operating, the operating gates of that, but on the wing wall and stuff, you're looking at a, a real contemporary styled palette with a real traditional styled building. And there's not enough there to, there's not enough, to me, there's not enough there to make that work. And so...
I think it was pretty much just an architectural, the architect putting it together really, that was him. You know, the applicant was asking them to make things look nice and elegant and inviting coming in, and that's what he transmitted to the architect, and that was the architect's opinion of putting this together.
Okay.
Commissioner Lure, if you wouldn't mind, could you expand on, on the concern? The, the front facade does have the horizontal board on it now.
Yeah, but it...
So, so I was, I'm just, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, so what, so what I'm concerned about is you have, you're going to have that window wall there, but then you have that real contemporary look of the horizontal board with the, in the galvanized frames for the screening for the, for the trash enclosure, where it seems to me that it would be more appropriate to take that stone veneer and use that on at least that, that east facing side of that trash enclosure to help, instead of introducing a whole, that whole new material in there. And it seems really out of, out of context for me. And I don't have a problem with it in the back because there's enough there to make it work, but in the front, there just doesn't seem to be enough. Yeah, right there. You know, it seems like just even that, that east facing wall, if that was the stone veneer, then it would tie that, that new facade into the existing.
Yeah, I wish I knew if there was a particular reason that, that he proposed it other than, you know, that. I, you know, I'm sure on the doors for the things, he's going to have to be careful because you can't...
Right.
Put, it'd be too heavy. Doors fall there hinges.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, you know, it's just, it's just that enclosure there, you know, because it's facing the street and there's, you know, I don't...
Right. Yeah, I see what you're talking about. I wish I had a better answer for you, but I don't. So, I mean, if I could find out, I mean, if there was something that was really important and if you could kind of leave us a little bit flexible, because if there was really a, a solid reason why, it needed to be something that we want to make sure we have flexibility.
Then Kathy, another question I had is on the lighting, you know, on those lighting fixtures. They're, they're stated as a, you know, as a medium base incandescent...
It should either be the rock.
Fixure. And I think that should be changed to a, to an LED. I'm not even sure that you can, you, with the Title 24, that you would be allowed to have a incandescent fixture for those exterior lights.
Sure.
And I, I like the fixtures just...
We'll make sure the bulbs get changed out.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we'll probably, that'll probably be something we catch when we do Title 24, like you say, for the building permits, so.
Right. Okay. Any further questions for Kathy or? Oh, at this point, I'll close public comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion. Richard, why don't you lead us off?
I just, I, I was kind of, want to follow up and maybe what, a little discussion with you, Derek. I, I see what you're saying regarding the trash, trash enclosure and the thing. Can you, what, what do you envision? What would you, what would, like, I got the print here and I guess it's that one. What do you, what would you think could be a more of a consistent?
Well, I think just on that, that west or the east facing wall, that wing wall in the east, just to, to use the existing palette of the stone, of the stone veneer, right?
Oh, just all the way over here?
Yeah, just, just around the trash enclosure.
Okay.
You know, and I think that would, you know, on the window wall, it will work fine because it's recessed far enough, but I think just, you know, I, I think that just set me off as being really incongruous with, with the rest of the facade. You've got a, you've got a fairly traditional style facade there, and then you've got a real contemporary item right, right out front.
Okay.
So, Michael, you're the, one of our arbiters?
I don't like this. No, I, I think the, the planes of the building are really different. That, that front traditional one is, is right out on the street. And this is, this is set back a little bit under the trellis, so I think it could be a little bit different. What I'm not sure, and this is an aesthetic thing, not so much a, a planning thing, but I'm not sure why we've got so many mixes of frames, materials and colors within a very small area. You know, if I'm walking past that first utility frame, it looks like on the plans, it's a vertical, it says gray composite, and then we get the dark material that's inside a frame for the trash enclosure, then we have the painted yellow frame.
Right.
So it's, it's three different things right in a row. And what I would say is clean it up one way or another, so that it's really simple. What I like about the, the yellow, it's not, I'm not a fan of yellow, or that, that green is one, one of my personal, never used that green. But that's okay, that's my own personal thing. But one of the things I like about the yellow is it's lightening up that cavity in there. So that as you, as you walk in under the trellis, which I think is helpful because of the, the bright sun, if somebody's going to be waiting outside, which I think they will, you know, I just, I just think you want to have some more consistency there.
Well, that's what I was trying to say with the, you know, the stone veneer, just at least on that wing wall. And you can go back to a different material. And I, I would even say that, that the gray kind of bothers me also where I think my, not my favorite, yellow, but, and yellow's not my favorite, but, you know, maybe carrying that through would get a little more consistency on that front facade with the, you know, with a little bit of the stone on that one wing wall. And I think, I think that would tie it together rather than introducing three different elements right there.
I, I was actually joking earlier with staff about, well, can we tear down the whole stone wall? Because it, it does kind of break off the visual lines into the entrance there from the adjacent property and the sidewalk. So, so another way to do it would be to take down more of the wall and just build the trash container and, and the utility enclosure as, as a much simpler thing. And that would, that would let a lot more light come in from the north, and you might get better observance into the entrance way.
You'd also get a grander entrance on that, too.
Yeah, it would feel a little more spacious because that wall's very oppressive that's there right now. And I don't think you're ever going to need it for much of anything. So I would say, I don't want to condition anything that way. I am agreeing with my peers that I think there's an aesthetic jumble there that's not very satisfactory for somebody who wants to open up a new restaurant, you know? And I know over time, things are going to change, so, you know, we can say, "Paint it this or do that," and over time, it's going to change anyway. But that is something I think is an easy fix, even if it just changes the color or you look at a very minor, minor bit of, of new stone or just the idea of taking down the wall together and building the thing in a much simpler fashion.
I'm in agreement on both of those. Joseph, what's...
And I would agree too, in my layman's approach, just anything that would make it, the trash receptacle area less conspicuous. We're all saying the same thing.
I'm sorry, Joe, I didn't mean to cut you off.
A couple of comments. I guess before I forget to mention it, so a couple of things concern me with the exiting, obviously, because I've mentioned it a couple of times already. The, with the, with the, the loss of that back door, which has traditionally been the smoking area, it seems to me that the smoking area is going to migrate either to the front or to the back. And I just would hope that the city staff would maybe weigh in on where they would like to see that occur. I would assume that we wouldn't want that in the front, and I, and I think we would, I don't know if you could even put tables and chairs in that back pedestrian area, right?
The, the city won't be defining a smoking area because it's prohibited outside.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe a little more, okay, well, now I know.
My only point there is, I, not much I can weigh into it other than to say they can't have one. Code doesn't allow you to smoke outside.
There we go. So, I mean, I just, okay. Okay, well then, I won't beat that dead horse. So Kathy had mentioned the occupancy being dependent on the tables and chair configuration that the owners choose, which I don't think it works that way. I think the A2, the, the square footage is going to drive that. And specifically on, during events, and I love the live music there, I mean, I think I speak for the community here when I, they, they do great. We love the music, we love the, we love the atmosphere. I love the atmosphere. I love the, the dance floor, but when you put that, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to, I'm, I'm getting to a point here, I promise. When you put that many people confined in that small of an area, I, I just really want to make sure we're, we're looking at safety paramount and we're, we're looking at that exit width and making sure that back exit is wide enough. The floor plan I saw was preliminary, I understand. It did appear that the storefronts are going to be sliding, and I don't know if that works for exiting. I think you have to have hinged doors that open in the direction of, of exiting.
I think they are hinged.
Okay, the, the floor plan appeared to show sliding, so just...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, at, at any rate, you know, we have an expert architect over here, so I want to make sure I...
Yes, I have an emergency.
Right, I just want to make sure we're looking at that and...
If you look at sheet P20, that, oh, nope, sorry, was that the existing one? Oh, you're right, it does make it look like a sliding door, but I think the, the intent was that they were hinged.
In the direction of travel, right.
At least that was the last conversation I had with the architect.
And so in the direction of travel, it looks like one of those doors is going to be hitting the, the trash. So, at any rate...
I got what you're saying, though.
Right, okay, so that dead horse is beaten. The, the bathrooms, I'm going to come back to the bathrooms for a moment. And I realize the city has a lot of discretion in that they own the property and they're leasing it to whoever is going to occupy that space. So, I mean, the city could in theory say one bathroom is going to be enough, but just realistically, as this space has continued to grow and it was insufficient, obviously, to the patrons prior to this expansion, it can only, it can only become worse with the additional square footage. So I would really want to see some serious effort given into maybe some additional bathroom facilities there.
Richard, have you had your chance? Okay. Michael, anything else? Okay, the other thing I'd just like to bring up Kathy, maybe a solution to, to the glare and the excess heat is, you know, there's possibility of exterior, exterior shades, automated shades on that, on that west wall, you know, sun control. Once you put them inside the building, it doesn't, it's, you're late, you know? So you have, they have to be exterior, and that could actually even give you a little bit more detail with a little bit of a, a little cornice or something around that, that's that west wall. And I'm, I'm following Michael on that, that I'm not going to jump up and down about it, but that west wall could use a little bit more articulation, maybe, maybe, you know, identify the individual pains a little bit more with, with some more detailing on that, just to give it, just to give it a little bit more life on that side, because that's a pretty important side. And I am surprised there isn't a emergency exit along, along that west window wall. It seems like that would be a solution for egress on that, but it would also hinder some of the seating arrangements too, so I understand that. Okay, do we have, you know, I'm comfortable with our, with our comments as, as suggestions that for the staff to look at this with the applicant and to give direction for the applicant that can move forward in some of these areas and that they are concerns for us. that can move forward in some of these areas, and that they are concerns for us. I don't really think we need to condition the project for, for what our comments are. So do we have a, do we have a motion, or? Okay.
Scott, when, when this would, when this gets discussed and there's some of the suggestions, and I, I think Jesse does bring up a couple of great points, the exit and the bathroom, is this something that, that you could bring, when, when you do your discussion with coastal staff, is it something that you could do, like, at your level, at, at, in staff level?
Well, so, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with this when they come back into the city for their building permits. You know, when they submit for that, someone will deal with it, they'll be, we'll, you know, we'll do the code analysis for exiting and the doors and the bathrooms, that type of thing, and I think what the project representative, Ms. Novak, was, was sort of referring to, and depending on how things are laid out inside, I, I know the, the applicant, Cliff Branch, was looking, you know, at several different restaurant types to go in there, restaurateurs that, you know, have other restaurants in the county, and so you could see the inside of that place. I, I walked through it, you know, it's funky, right? The layout's kind of funky, the kitchen's kind of funky, the bathrooms are kind of funky.
Yeah.
I, I could see there being interior changes made to all of that to reconfigure some of it, so depending on, you know, what the tenant ends up being and what kind of restaurant they're putting in there, that's going to drive some of this, too, because they may want, you know, their bar out further, that would take some of the seating away, they may want their kitchens, you know, reconfigured in a different location, because it's, it's maybe not the greatest layout that I've ever seen from a kitchen standpoint. So, when you're looking at some of the, the folks that have more experience running restaurants and those types of things, and you, you could, you could envision that the inside of that's going to change some.
Is it within our purview, we're not, we're not allowed to change the plumbing code arbitrarily, but is it within our purview to say if, if something is a major renovation but doesn't reach a point that they have to bring everything up to code, is it in our purview to say we would like to bring the number of fixtures up to code relative to the number of people the building is producing? In other words, there's a lot of grandfathering that happens where that single stall, even if it's ADA, might be grandfathered because you haven't done enough renovation to the project. So the kitchen's the expensive part, if they're not going to renovate that, and they aren't renovating really that much of the exterior. So what I would say, though, is that in our purview to, to say we wanted to bring the toilet count up to the full occupancy load as determined by the new tenants.
Interesting question, not one I've really considered before. I'm, I'm just trying, I'm trying to think how that would, you know, how that would work.
So Scott, isn't, isn't there a requirement on occupancy load for a number of bathroom fixtures?
There, there is, and, and then, and then they're increasing that likely. Now, because they're increasing the square footage, it's likely increasing the occupancy, but again, that, but that, the caveat there is, there's some things in there that maybe don't make a lot of sense to people that really run restaurants, and those things might, so some of that stuff might get changed, and so the occupancy load may, may remain the way that it is, may, may remain the same that it is, and so then what happens? And so that's what I was trying to, you know, in trying to respond to Commissioner Lucas's question, I, I was thinking through what that, what that process looks like, realizing that, that we, we may not end up with all the square footage that we see in here, you know, from a seating standpoint any longer. And so, so what happens if it just remains the same because they've changed the internal configuration, right? And so that would be a more difficult get, and then, so we have to run down the process of, can we condition them to do that?
Well...
I suppose, well, I suppose you can condition them to do that regardless, it's a discretionary process. It's nothing that we've, that we've broached with the applicant, though, which is a little concerning, we haven't talked with them about it.
What is the requirement for, on occupant load for, like, like how far off is this building for where we, where we are? Do you have any idea?
I don't know what the current occupant load is for.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure on commercial, I don't deal with commercials much.
I don't know what the occupant load is, well, and so maybe I can shed a little bit of light here, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but, so the occupant load is going to be dependent on the total square footage of the dining area.
Of the dining, correct, of the, of the dining area, correct, and that's what I'm saying, right now we have a square footage because they just took the inside and said, hey, we're going to add this square footage to it, leave it the same, and this is what it's going to be. What I'm telling you is, if the applicant's doing what he said he's doing, and that's talking to restaurateurs that operate multiple restaurants in our county, then I very easily could see changes being made to the inside of the building, because it's not often that you see kitchens configured like that. And so, you know, that's, that's going to be the heart, heart of the, heart and soul of the thing is going to be the kitchen, right? And, and how that functions, and I, I can see that being changed.
So would the requirement be, be caught in the building review process?
I, I would say as it sits right now, if the occupant load increases, then we'd be looking at adding bathrooms. But what I'm telling you is that it might not, and then when we say, oh yeah, we're going to do that, and then they like, they go, oh, we need more of this square footage for our, again, our kitchen, or however we reconfigure the inside, and then it'd be like, Scott, you said they were going to add bathrooms because of the, you know, what's there now? And I'm like, yeah, but then they changed it, you know, when they actually came in with their tenant improvements, because they have a, you know, a prospective, you know, restaurant, you know, to lease the space.
Well, and I realize that they're rare, very rarely open together, but the, the retail, I mean, that should be included in the analysis as well, which would require one as a given by itself, so, I mean, theoretically, you're only getting one single occupancy stall, ADA for the restaurant, one single occupancy stall for the gender neutral, for the, for the mercantile, I mean, so...
Yeah.
It's, it's short by a lot, I think, so...
Hey, Scott, so, so I'm trying to get clarity on the process here. So let's say this thing goes through, and, and everything's cool, and the guy, the restaurateur comes in and he says, hey, I, I want to build a new kitchen. Okay. And he goes to build a new kitchen, and he, and he has his occupancy. At that time, could you say, hey, you know what, if you're going to be building a new kitchen, you're probably going to have to pop into a, a bathroom? Would that be at the time where you, because, I mean, that bathroom, the kitchen in the, right, that area?
Again, it's, it's, the layout is certainly not ideal.
Right.
You know, you walk through the kitchen portion to get back to the bathrooms. So, I mean, this is, which is why I'm saying, I mean, if any, if what the applicant's suggesting that he's going to do and go get somebody that operates restaurants, they're not going to like that configuration. All the, the folks that operate regular restaurants that I'm, that I know, and I know several, that would be the first thing they changed, like, we don't want all these people walking back into the kitchen, it's problematic, and so, you know, that, that stuff will be changed, and you'd be looking at reconfiguring that whole area potentially. It just depends, like, it's a little bit of an unknown, because I don't think he has, he has some folks that he's looking at, but I don't know that, that he's gone any further than that, so, and I don't know if they've had any additional conversations, so he's just taking what he has and trying, and going, hey, we, we want to add a better entryway and, you know, and we expanded that, and we want to close this little thing at the back that doesn't do anything for us. Those are, I mean, that makes complete sense to me, why they're, they're coming forward, and then we'd have to deal with the rest of it as it, as it comes.
So Scott, let me ask this as far as the process question. If they reconfigure the interior space with a new, say, new, new kitchen, new, you know, readjusting a new bar area or something, would that come back before us for a review?
No, that's tenant improvement stuff.
That's tenant improvement.
Yep.
As long as they don't touch the facades.
Yeah, as long as they're not expanding it any further, touching the facades, yeah, I mean, that would be all within the, the, inside of the building, and the uses are changing, it's the same use, it's just the layout internally, and that's, we don't have, we, as you're aware, we don't have anything in our zoning code that tells you how you have to lay your restaurant out.
Okay.
This, this is like a two-part precise plan. We're, we're putting together the, the holding capacity of the building with an exterior appearance, with a reasonable assumption that that door to the south is going to be somewhere on that wall, and, and then somebody's going to come in with a building permit to alter the interior at a separate point, and unless they have any impact on the exterior, we won't see it.
That's correct.
But they're still going to have to be compliant through the building process, through the building code process, both, both for egress and, and, you know, sanitary facilities.
They'll, they'll have to absolutely hit the egress, nobody, nobody grandfather's egress.
No.
It, it would concern me that they, in theory, there could be some, the plumbing code isn't quite as, bring everything up to speed if you've got ADA access, so that's the only thing I'm not sure about. But again, if, if I'm a restaurateur, I want to make sure I don't have a line going into my bathroom that everybody complains about at public hearings.
Yeah, and your, and your line would be in the kitchen, so...
Yeah.
That's just right now, so...
[laughing]
So, yeah, I mean, exactly, so...
Okay, okay, so I, I think we want a couple of strong recommendations to the, to the applicant to, to clean up the, the front entrance, reduce the material selection or keep it more consistent, you know, take a look at that, the west wall facade and see if there's, if there's a way to, to liven it up with a little more articulation, and strongly suggest to them that they count the back bathroom fixtures. And, do we have a motion?
I have a motion yet.
Okay.
Let me try to get this right here. So I move, we, Planning Commission, approve amendment A00-52 to CUP 1692-92, request for an amendment to a conditional use permit.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion in the second? The only thing I would say, too, is I, we, we had confirmation but not assurance, you know, that the, that the access to the dock and then that egress was, was granted in the master lease of both.
I was involved with the current negotiations with the, the leases and the agreements, and Ms. Novak bringing that up, but the, the dais sort of jogged my memory again, and I remember seeing that.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Great, okay.
May I say one thing?
Sure, you can say two things.
Great project, it looks great, you guys did a good job. If, if there's any way possible that the, that the builder can encourage the live music to remain, I think the community would appreciate it.
They actually have a minor use permit into, application into us right now that we've posted on the site that includes that use.
Okay, great, great. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, let's call the question.
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mr. Stasky?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, aye. Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, moving on, we have B3, case, case number UPO-487, ADO-129 at 2770 Elm Street, Moro Bay.
If you just give us a second while we put the presentation up on the...
Let's, let's take, let's take a quick two minutes so you can load that and... Okay, well, welcome back. And do we, do we have a staff report ready to go?
We will in a second.
Uh, your microphone, please? Switch microphones? Sure. Yeah, no problem. Okay, we'll try this again. Okay, good evening. The final item on the agenda this evening is a request for conditional use permit approval and a parking exception at 2770 Elm Avenue. The applicants, Larry and Jacqueline Farren, proposed to construct in addition to an existing non-conforming residence located on a through lot within the R1 S2 residential zoning district and in the Delmar neighborhood in North Moro Bay. The existing structure is considered non-conforming with regard to the existing side yard setback, building separation, and the parking situation on site. The proposed addition complies with the development standards set forth in the zoning ordinance, and it eliminates the building separation issue by attaching the proposed addition to the existing residential structure. This is the existing site. The image on the left was taken from Elm, Elm Avenue looking towards the east, and the image on the right was taken at the rear of the residence from Fur Avenue looking to the west. The removal of the trellis structure visible from Fur Avenue has been included as a condition of approval in Resolution 0718. The site plan shows the proposed addition shaded with diagonal lines at the eastern or right-hand side of the existing residence. The applicant proposes to add 461 square feet of habitable floor area to an existing 896 square foot residence, and to construct a new 334 square foot one-car garage with an 18-foot front yard setback. The parking exception is to allow for that second required space to be located in tandem in the driveway. This is the new proposed floor plan that shows the new garage with an increased front setback, which is a nice articulation to the front of the facade, and the new master bedroom suite at the rear of the structure. The front and rear elevations clearly illustrate how the proposed addition is consistent with the architectural elements that are utilized in the existing residence as required in the residential design guidelines. The north and south elevations. So therefore, it's staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the requested conditional use permit and parking exception through the adoption of Resolution 07-18, subject to the findings and conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Do we have any questions for staff?
The dilapidated condition, that's something that we made the decision on, meaning you made the decision on going after the site?
I added that word in my staff report based on previous conversation, and then I went out and looked at it, and I was like, I totally wish I could have erased that word. It is not, it's not that dilapidated, but it does take the lot coverage over the maximum allowable, and it was not shown on the existing site plan.
That's what, that's what I mainly wanted to get at. So the way that an open trellis is dealt with is as lot coverage?
Currently, in the current zoning ordinance, it is. In the zoning ordinance update, it is proposed to be removed. If a trellis structure is 50% or more open to passage of light and air, then it does not, it may not, moving forward, be considered lot coverage, but at this point it is.
I reserve everything else for...
Okay.
Joe?
And, and there isn't any, anything to preclude access to the existing garage or a new garage from, I think it's Fur Avenue? Okay, is that allowable?
Yes, access from Fur is allowable. Yes, access from Fur is allowable.
Jesse?
No question.
You know, I took a look at the project, but I didn't, you know, I didn't notice how high the front porch deck was. Is it under a 30-inch minimum because it is in the setback?
It is, it is not. It is existing, and the railings conform to the building code, and I apologize for not including that in the, in your nonconforming table. But it is existing, and they're not touching it.
Okay, and in the new codes, we're looking to exclude those.
Exactly, yes, sir.
For this very condition.
Exactly.
Okay, great. Do you have a question? Okay, okay, do we have any expertise communications? And then, Richard, yeah?
I had talked to Mr. Farren at his house yesterday about the project.
Okay, any further? Okay, at this point, I will open it up for public comment with the applicant. Like to come forward and say a few words, it's not required, but.
Hello, my name is Larry Farren. My wife and I reside at the residence. We've been there for about three years. Coming from an area where, from the LA area where we originally had 3,000 square feet and two grandchildren, and absolutely love the Morro Bay lifestyle, we just need a little more. And we were lucky and fortunate that the existing house was completely remodeled when we purchased the house. So we don't want to touch the existing structure at all because new kitchen, new bathrooms, new everything. So when I went to the planning department in the very beginning, we tried to do it the way the city says we need to do it, and it didn't work. And it didn't work for me, mainly because we tried to put a two-car garage with a two-story over the top, and Joan was right, it really didn't look good. I mean, it just didn't really conform to what the area has. So with Scott's help and Joan's help, we came up with this, and I think we came up with a great solution to what we're trying to do. And that's just get one more room for the grandkids, and we'll be set. So I think that's all I have to say. If there's any questions, and as far as the front deck, it is lower than 30 inches. Okay? It's 24 inches.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. If we have any questions, we'll call you forward, we'll leave it open, public comment. Does anybody else wish to speak to this item? Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant? Joe? I didn't say a yea or a nay. Okay, okay, we're good, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Who wants to venture out?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really like small things done well. This is, this is, this is going to sound stupid, this is how smart this is. You've got the master bedroom, you've got this nice little tiny window that gives you another orientation for wind and light in the room, in addition to the beautiful two big doors that go out to the side yard. So most people would have just walled that off and not bring that other light source in that's going to give you cross ventilation, it's a much nicer plan, so I really appreciated that. When, I have to admit, I didn't walk Fur, I didn't see the trellis except in the report. And when I see it in the report, I like it. I like what it does to the outside, and when I look at the plan, I like what it does in terms of taking the kitchen outside. So I'm not opposed to, if our new proposal in the, that we've vetted talking about here, I'm not opposed to, well, let's just leave that alone, it's okay. And then, I'm, my only concern is because we're in an area where a lot of people in the future may want to come back with two floors 20 years from now, does the garage exception linger then? In other words, if somebody puts the second floor on, no, put the parking space back up.
Our ordinance doesn't, as you're likely aware, speak to that. You know, so, you know, it becomes, once again, a discretionary process. You know, the item that the applicant raised about when they come up with the design, they were trying to, again, not touch the main structure, so the two-story portion was over the garage on the side, so it was off balance and kind of funky looking, and so that's why we said, well, we have parking exceptions, we can get you in on the ground floor, and that's when they came up with this. So, so, yeah, we don't, we'd have to be, we'd have to look at it, there's discretionary process, so you could require additional parking. It would be, depending on how, like, if they were going to go up over the whole second floor, then you're reconstructing much of the house, and so that discretionary authority going into the Planning Commission to require the two-car garage at that point might be appropriate. Although, what size of the lot? So, yeah, and I think we are, we do have some exceptions related to the two-car parking requirement built into the lots under 5,000 square feet into the upcoming code to allow flexibility, so we're not doing gymnastics on some of these sites like you've seen us do in the past, so.
Yeah, that's my only concern, because I know with the second unit not requiring a parking space now, in theory, you know, there could be a second floor that somebody says, oh, it's the second, it's the secondary dwelling unit. So then we've got even more material coming in, so I think we had one of these a few weeks ago that we basically said it's small, it's on a small street, and I think we let it go forward. And I would say I'm sympathetic to it when we have these tight lot conditions and where people are refraining from adding additional square footage, but I would like to condition it that it remain with the one-story construction and not, and be brought back if somebody goes to the second floor.
Okay. Richard?
I really, really like this project. I, just riding around the neighborhood, I like the porch, it's conducive to, you know, seeing people walking around and being outside, and I like the decor, I like the fact that it's small and single-story, even though there's others two-story there, but I, I think it's similar to that one project that we had on this area sometime a little while ago, that small bungalow time, and I think that, that the owners did a really good job.
Jess?
I very much, you know, liked the design, but I'm also recalling that in previous meetings, you know, I've usually been the voice that says, you know, automobiles in the neighborhood are a blight, and particularly, and we've talked about how anytime we have one of these parking exceptions, to be sure that it doesn't place an additional burden on the adjacent neighbors. And in this case, we're increasing the size of the house, and perhaps subsequent owners who might be occupied by a larger family, and that might translate into more cars. And I took a look at the neighborhood, and a lot of the homes have single garages, in fact, there's one house at the end of the block that looked to me like it didn't even have a garage, and so development was going to occur there, and we have to be careful in terms of precedent that we're establishing because things are going to get larger there. However, and also taking into fact that this is, because this is a street-to-street property, it's one of those rare examples of where tandem parking might actually work, and if you had a covered garage that could afford two cars tandem. However, I do like the design and the mention of grandchildren. You know, it occurs to me that if you were to do anything other than a second story, it would mean what sacrificing, what backyard you have, and I understand that as well. So as long as we can somehow condition this to sort of walled it off so that when we get the more obnoxious developments in the neighborhood, we don't have to concede to them because of this as a precedent, I'm in favor of it.
Jesse?
Not really much to add, I just, you know, it was a really small house, and I think it just needs a little more space, so. Good design.
Yeah, okay, I concur. My concern is because of the secondary dwelling unit requirements, that if they did put a second story on, that it could become a, you know, a secondary unit, a granny unit or something, and increase the parking load, so I don't have a problem if there's a way that we can, we can condition this for further review if.
So we would condition the parking exception for reconsideration by the Planning Commission if a second story addition were proposed in the future? I mean, it's pretty straightforward, and any planner that would see it, when they look back and see how it was approved originally, so, not an issue.
That's good, do we have a, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I want to make a motion to approve Resolution PC 07-18, conditional use permit UPO-487, with the parking exception ADO-129 for 2770 Elm Street, with the addition of the language staff will put in regarding the parking exception.
Okay, sure. Also, wanted to get a little clarification before we go further on the trellis at the back.
Okay, let's discuss that. Michael's a yea on that? Joseph? Jesse?
I'll stay a yea.
Okay.
Richard? Conditioned though? There's a, there's, there's a trellis in the back that puts it, puts it over the lot coverage limit, and as it sits now, so we would allow the trellis to remain. In the future, in the future plans, those will not be counted towards lot coverage, but under our present code, they do. So, leave it in as a yea.
I understand that it's over, it's okay.
Have that as a condition on the motion.
But I'm thinking.
We'll add the, add the.
Correct. Correct.
We'll add the trellis issue.
Removal of the condition that requires the removal of the trellis.
Thank you, yeah, there you go, that's well said.
Double negative there. Okay, so we got two conditions on that, two additions on that motion. Do we have a second, including those?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion in the second? Okay, the only thing I'd say is just, you know, as long as it's in, kept in good repair, you know, of course, that would be a, you know, a code enforcement item in the future, so. Okay, let's call the, call the question?
Commissioner Lucas?
Hi.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Hi.
Commissioner Barone?
Hi.
Commissioner Graffia?
Hi.
And Chairman Luer?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you, have a, good luck on the project. Okay, we're moving on to new business. We have C1, a review of the Harbor Advisory Board and Planning Commission Subcommittee Meeting summary for Measure D and Working Waterfront that was held January 11th, 2018. Okay, so we'll have a staff, staff presentation on that and a discussion.
No problem. So, before you, again, a sort of recounting of the last Measure D Working Waterfront Subcommittee that's made up of Commissioners Luer and Graffia from the Planning Commission. And so met as the joint subcommittee with the HAB subcommittee on January 11th, and came out with some direction, and you have that in the brief staff report that I gave you, and I'll recount the items here. It's that Measure D, and we looked at defining what primarily for the purposes of meant, and then you have the bullet points there, it says directly related to, "Commercial fishing is the highest and best use." Not pancakes to subsidize commercial recreational fishing. What that means, that sounds a little odd, but we were using that as an example of what happens when you get something that's nonconforming, can you, you have a, something that's primarily related to the fishing industry, but to make it work, you have to sell other stuff, meaning you have to have a restaurant that sells pancakes. And was that okay? And that was, that wasn't something that was largely supported by the group. And then it says not 51% of anything, you know, revenue square footage based on, so based on the number slips. So what that's speaking to is that, okay, 51%, the calculation is that 51% of our revenue in Measure D is derived from commercial fishing, and then, so 49, since it's not a majority, can be pancakes. So that was sort of the commentary that came out of that. And then we took a look at one of the examples that the Planning Commission approved, well, sort of recently, for the South Bay Wild site, which is the sort of, where South Bay Wild used to be, which is that sort of Quonset hut-looking thing down there next to Morro Bay Landing. And that, and that project was approved, and it had limited, they were unloading fish, and they were going to have a fish case there out in front of it, and then they were going to have some ancillary things that they could have, that was, I think, about 15% of what they could have, and so that project was approved that way. So, not the 49%, but it had a little bit of ancillary sales of things that might not be directly things that came off the boat. Say if they were, you know, selling smoked fish that they brought in, maybe they would also be selling, I don't know, something that went with it, with the fish, tartar sauce, I don't know, something like that. So that seemed to be relatively okay. Item B under the Measure D is clearly incidental there too, means something fishermen need or is directly supportive to or of them. I guess that means if you could have a bait and tackle shop or something like that, that would be something related to maybe what they did, and that was part of the conversation we had.
Scott, a little clarification on that from my memory, if you don't mind me interrupting, I'm sorry.
No, please do.
This was, our priorities were fishing, direct fishing-related activities, mariculture activities fell within the fishing, fishing activities, and bait, and, you know, bait would be clearly fishing, but tackle could be done one block over. So it was not, you know, selling licenses and stuff was not required, was not the highest and best use, but it was incidental too, so.
Yeah.
So it wasn't, so on our order of priorities, that could be done a block away, didn't necessarily have to be done on the waterfront in Measure D.
Item C was, what does non-commercial recreational fishing mean? And it, and the description there that you see is, it means mom and pop or citizen recreational fishing activities. It's not commercial sport fishing for hire operations? And then, how do you get that? It's a private recreational fishing vessel, and then you must show evidence of fishing, such as having rod holders on the boat, and associated pertinences on the vessel, so that would be for rods and tackle, and an owner would have to have a recreational fishing license. That's sort of what they defined it down to there. And then I think I have, so what you see here is related to the other item that I passed out to you in its language in the Harbor Advisory Board memo from their meeting on March, it says March 2nd, but it was actually March 1st. They met and looked at the same, the same summary from our January meeting, and they, one of the items, they kind of went over this and then wanted to provide some additional input, I guess, and so that's what you see there, and it's on the second page of their, so the backside of their memo, sort of at the top, and it, and it gets into definitions for what would be allowed in the Measure D area, and it talks about, by way of definition, these activities include but are not limited to tourism, boating, commercial fishing, recreational fishing, mariculture, charter boat operations, boat repair, maintenance, boat building, marine supply services, marine construction, marine industry support services, seafood processing, seafood sales, aquariums. construction, marine industry support services, seafood processing, seafood sales, aquariums, transportation, shipping, military activities, coastal-dependent energy production, boat marinas, boat moorage, boat dockage, wharfage, boat launching and other water-dependent use. And then there's actually a paragraph that's, that's right after that. If you look at the handout, the memo that they provided, it says, "Further, the Harbor Advisory Board recommends that the designated Measure D area and its defined uses be incorporated into the city of Morro Bay's working waterfront." So, this appeared to be talking about Measure D, but then when you go here, it talks about incorporating it into the working waterfront discussion. And so it's a little unclear to me what they were trying to get at. So, I didn't have the ability today to, to reach out to Eric Endersby. He's in Washington DC right now with a contingent of city folk. So I couldn't ask him what the, what was meant by that. So there's some clarification we would need to get on that, but it was an attempt at defining types of uses that would be allowed in that area.
So I'm a little confused on this too, Scott.
I was, so it talks about working waterfront and then it talks about Measure D. And so I wasn't exactly sure where they were going with it, which is actually why I'm pointing it out. I don't know exactly what was meant by this. And so we're going to have to get some clarifying, you know, some clarification, I mean, from the HAB and/or maybe Ron Reiser. I mean, I could have contacted him, I guess.
Because there, there's clearly uses in there that they're specifying in Measure D that are not allowed in Measure D.
Yeah, so maybe, well, and it talks to the top of it about Morro Bay working waterfront land uses. And so, again, it's a little unclear. So I was going to have to get clarification. I put it on here because I wasn't, I was unsure what was, what they were asking us actually. Which is okay, we're going to have the meeting between the joint boards to work some of this stuff out. I just, I wanted to give you some of the input that they provided and have the opportunity to talk about it a little bit. And to talk about the synopsis that I gave you of what we took away from the last Subcommittee meeting on the 11th of January. So we also, we were looking at both Measure D and better defining it, and then looking at working waterfront and definitions. So the, this was the first item there. Yeah, so the working waterfront says, "Supports the HAB working waterfront mission statement." So, and I have a copy of it over there if you want me to read it out to you. But we'll have that available to you. You've seen it in packets previously when I brought this item before you. But, and then it goes on to say, "But believe that the working waterfront land uses statement is too complicated and far-reaching." And so maybe that's what this is trying, maybe that's what the previous one was trying to get to. It was, it was a little unclear to me. Item B on the, on the summary list, says working waterfront supports the three working waterfront sectors. And that's, this is also the item that Ms. Winholz spoke to earlier. And it says fishery sector, and that's the Measure D zone. You have the visitors' sector, which is Beach Street, south to Mariners Park. And then, when Eric and I talked about this, we thought maybe that it should extend beyond that to Tidlands, the end of Tidlands Park and the launch ramp. And it looks like, and I'll get to that in a second, but it looks like the HAB took that conversation up on the, on the 1st of March. And then the commercial sector, which is the issue that Ms. Winholz raised, Mariners Park, south to State Park Marina. And so, you'll see changes that the, that the HAB was interested in when they discussed it on March 1st, was that you had three working waterfront locations. You have the fishery sector, and that's Measure D zone, north of Beach Street. Visitor sectors, Beach Street, south to Tidlands Park Launch Ramp. And we removed the Mariners Park thing because it didn't seem like it should stop there. And then, we replaced commercial sector because we also, and I guess the HAB did too, thought that might be a little bit of a misnomer, although there are, as Chairperson Luer indicated earlier, commercial lease sites, both on the land and then the boat lease sites in the water in that, in that area. So changed the name to the southern sector, and that's south of Tidlands Park Launch Ramp area to the State Park Marina. Seemed to make a little more sense and people could understand that's the south, that's the south end. And so that was kind of, you know, what came out of the HAB discussion. But some of that discussion was probably started by Eric because he and I discussed that before he went into the HAB meeting and before he put the sort of synopsis thing together for review.
Could I, I don't really agree with you on this southern sector nomenclature. And I'll tell you why. For me, when I look at that, I'm looking, okay, when I see southern and I go, central, northern, okay. Well, over here, we got fishing, visitor, okay. I think something like recreational or something would be more appropriate for that and would be more, you know, from the, from a casual observer, when they look at that, it doesn't, it doesn't connect for me. Because it's, it's one's, you know, the language part, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I, I get what you're, what you're getting at. We thought the commercial thing was a little heavy handed because most of it's not commercial. A portion of it is commercial though. And so if you call it recreational, then, then you have the same issue. So, I don't, I mean, I think they came up with southern and Eric and I talked about it just because it's the southern end of it. Certainly, there could be other names used for it. It's, it's just, we did the same thing that I just discussed with you. We said, it was, they came up with a commercial name and we said, okay, commercial. And then we said, well, most of it's, we did the same thing, said, most of it's kind of recreational oriented. But if you say it's recreational, portions of it are commercial. And we said, well, that's, that wasn't working. And so we said, maybe we just use the south end. And that's, and that's likely, and it looked like they, maybe the HAB jumped on board with that. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I just, that's kind of the conversation that went into it. And it wasn't a whole lot more than what I just described to you.
So maybe, so maybe it needs to be something like mixed use.
It could be. That, that could be it. I mean, we could do something along those lines. What do you think about that?
Because, because you have residential, you do have residential there. You do have commercial. You do have industrial, you know, usage. And you do have recreational.
Yeah, because I look at for like, when I, when I, when I think about the waterfront, I think about not only the waterfront, but the use of it and incorporating the bay. And when you look, like, when I'm, like, for the future, this is what I would like to see. It's like, a lot of the, the like kayaking and stuff, we have Escha over there, we have, it's, it's a recreational kind of spot where people can, can, yeah, can visit. And it makes, it's, it's a unique area for, for us in the estuary. And I think, I don't know, I think it needs, what about the estuary?
Well, it's not, it's not all estuary. You know, there, there's just a combining, there's a combining of uses and an intermingling of uses that, you know, almost any designation is not going to be accurate.
Yeah, that's the problem. The first third of it, say, is commercial.
Yeah.
I mean, extending down to, in Morro Bay, from the launch ramp, that's all commercial on there. And then it, on the waterfront portion it is, and then behind it, so those lots are split down on the waterfront's commercial. And then halfway up, then at the base of the bluff up is residential.
No, there's, there's a, right next to the boat, right next to the old boat ramp, that's, that's a residential right there.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's just non-conforming. I mean, we, I mean, we do have several different uses there, just to talk about zoning in general. So, so, so yeah, I mean, I really brought this forward just to talk about it with you guys. Just so you knew that the, you know, that we kind of condensed this, so you had a feel for what we'd be talking about. If you saw things that we absolutely missed or you didn't like that we came up with with our synopsis, meaning the synopsis from Eric and myself, then letting us know, or things that you want us to make sure that we bring up when we have the joint meeting, then, you know, now's the time to speak. Otherwise, we'll take the information that, you know, we've gotten from the HAB on March 1st, their memo, get some clarification on a couple of things. And then whatever information you give tonight, and then we'll try to come forward and frame some policy for you guys to take a look at, at the joint meeting on the 22nd. Did I get through?
So is that, is that joint meeting on the 22nd, is that going to be a full, a full meeting or a joint meeting between the representatives?
No, it's a full meeting. It's a full meeting of both boards.
Okay.
So, so yeah, and it'll be at 6 o'clock. It'll be in here. So, or no, it's not in here. It's at the, we're doing it at the, at the community center, sorry. Multipurpose room. Was there, oh, working waterfront, they wanted included in the, what was it, the GPLCP update should include the working waterfront mission statement and identification of the three sectors? So when the Subcommittee met, when we were looking at those allowed uses in the area, that thing seemed pretty complicated. And the Subcommittee sort of agreed to that. So they sort of trashcanned that. And I think, came up with that other definition, which again, I have to sort of understand where they were coming from on that. And then there was the issue related to Measure D, that, that, not to exclude the historic non-conforming uses in the new policies. If the non-conforming uses were to stop, it should be allowed to reinstate in the future at the same location. I'm not sure what that's supposed to be saying.
That's not.
That's not what I took away from there. So I, I'm not sure if it's just how it's worded in the memo here. I was a little confused about that. That was, that was the second item I need to get clarification on. I wanted to point it out to you that that's not really the conversation that we had. I think we talked about, hey, if you're non-conforming and you stay where you're at, you're okay. But I thought the commentary was, the Subcommittee didn't like the fact that when you're moving it out of this location, if it gets torn down like the, is that Togs 3?
Yeah.
The little boat building thing is getting torn down. And they're taking that restaurant and putting it in to Fowler's new building that's going to be two stories and it'll be upstairs. I think the Subcommittee was less inclined to favor that type of idea. And, and so, I think that's what it was supposed to be. This seems to indicate something else. And so, again, I didn't see the minutes or didn't have an opportunity to talk with Eric beforehand. So, something we need to get some clarification on.
Yeah, my memory on that too was that was not allowed, that a non-conforming use was allowed as long as it stayed, stayed uninterrupted use. And as soon as the use discontinued, that it wasn't going to be grandfathered in for, for another tenant. So.
Well, the, it would have to comply with our, the way our non-conforming ordinance works now. And that's, if you, if you discontinue it for more than six months, then you lose it.
Right. That's, that's where, I think, I thought that's where we left it as a Subcommittee?
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I remember we, we talked about interruptions that would be closing down some entities so that they could do necessary repairs that they deferred for years. Or there was a gap between, you know, one tenant leaving and another one. And there was, and, and, you know, I brought up the notion that, you know, for a, for a sub lessee who's leasing to someone below him, you know, then the sensors are depriving of property if he, you know, if he can't sell that property right to the, lease that property right to the next tenant. So you have to be careful, careful about that. You know, the, the one meeting I attended, you, I'm particularly, particularly interested in, in the South Bay Wild opportunity that we all seemed to support. And then, of course, it faded. And I, for one, don't know exactly why it didn't succeed. And, and I, and I wonder if we could look more closely so that sometime in the future, when somebody comes by seemingly doing what we want them to do, you know, that we can do whatever we can to make sure they succeed.
So it, it wasn't so much that the, the business plan wasn't going to succeed. It was more that Rob Sykes was the, was the, the lessee of that, it was the one that was going to open that, he and his wife. There was a few things going on at the time. And I think one of the things is he was trying to get some quota for a certain type of fish and he wasn't able to get it out of the quota fund. And I think he got sort of frustrated with the whole process. And so he says, I'm going back to Oregon. And that's what he did. And so, but there are other folks that are looking to take up the site and do something similar.
So you, you think it was more one of frustration as opposed to barriers put up so that it just wasn't feasible?
No, he, he didn't have any issue with how the project was really conditioned, to my understanding. I mean, I talked to him regularly about it. He seemed pretty happy and was ready to go. His issue really, I think, boiled down to getting a certain amount of quota for something he wanted to fish for, not being able to get any traction with the quota, through the quota folks. And, and then kind of throwing up his hands and I'm actually, I'm not going to fish anymore.
But so that's, yeah, because I recall, we, I don't think we were responsible, you know, for any disadvantage, for disadvantaging him. But, but we really can't do anything about the real reasons that he got frustrated, took up stakes and left.
Yeah, we don't have any, we don't really have any role in the, in how quota, the quotas are.
The other thing I want, I wanted to say, that came out of that meeting, I recall when the, when the, early in the first meeting, that, you know, some of the people thought that, that commercial recreational fishing would actually be allowed in Measure D. And I was surprised at that. And so I just, I'd like to make clear that commercial recreational fishing is not to be allowed in Measure D.
Well, there's the two, there's the two sections in there. Yeah, the.
I mean, I mean, the, the summation here makes it pretty, fairly clear that we're talking about. And in fact, even in Measure D talks about non-commercial recreational fishing. But I want to make sure that the converse is what we're excluding.
I think it was pretty, pretty clear on Measure D when it went through that it was, the use that was there was allowed, but no more.
Okay, well, then I might, I might be wrong. I might, but I perceive as a confusion.
But it always seemed odd to me on Measure D that they would allow recreational fishing and then not allow basically sport fishing, commercial recreational fishing. That always, I, I think that was a hissy fit more than a real good planning decision.
That, that may be. But I was, I was just looking at the language, you know, when the, when the ballot was on, they were, they were pretty clear about that. And then the other thing I really wanted to ask, you know, with respect to this working waterfront land uses explanatory paragraph, with respect to the, the southern, the commercial sector, what do we, what are we trying to do by preserving this commercial sector to the south? By that, I mean, you know, if we're saying that all of the things in the working waterfront land use paragraph apply to commercial sector C, then you probably need some kind of a vote by the, by the citizens of Morro Bay, because there's a lot of residents there who clearly don't want a lot of the things that are included in this defining paragraph of working waterfront land use. I mean, clearly you can say, well, you know, Measure D, the fishery section, the Measure D, has sort of taken precedent over a lot of these things. You can, you can clearly sort of figure out that a lot of these uses aren't allowed in Measure, the Measure D area, the fishery section. But, I mean, at this point, you can make an argument that all of those kinds of uses are allowed and maybe even encouraged in the visitor's section and in the commercial sector. And then that's what really created a lot of outcry and discomfort among the people who happened to live in that section, who, you know, didn't want things like, I don't know, military activities and, and, you know, I don't know, but whole, whole sorts of things there. So, I was just trying to figure out, you know, what, what was trying to be accomplished by, by the way it was stuck together.
Okay, the, part of the problem is that some of those residences are on commercial properties, commercially zoned properties. And they have usurped the commercial aspect for residential. And so to create, to create a working waterfront that's viable into the future, I think we need to protect the ability for those areas to be used as, as commercial areas when they are viable and as it comes forward. For instance, maybe support vessels for wave production, maintenance for one of the wave field, generating fields that's, that's already set off of our coast right now, you know, or wind, you know, offshore wind production. You're going to need, you're going to need a place for, for the support vessels to. You're going to need, you're going to need a place for, for the support vessels to, to land. And, you know, there were, there were commercial areas down there that were, were, would allow those, those vessels to, to work out. And so, so I don't think, I don't think it's prejudicing, I don't see it prejudicing in one or the other, but just to be able to allow those uses to go in, because they would need a, you know, conditional use permit to go, to go in there, so they would, they would get a review process. But just because somebody's got a home there, they shouldn't, I don't think they should be allowed to shut off, to eliminate the viability of our, of our harbor and our working waterfront.
Right. I think I'm only just approaching it from a very, you know, sort of practical, how this will play out. I mean, to the people living in the area, it's going to seem like they run the risk of, you know, having a cannery next door to them. Now, I realize that won't happen in effect, in fact, but.
Well, there is a cannery, there was a cannery there.
But it strikes me that you can't, you can't really say that the intervening decades of that area not having those kinds of activities is totally irrelevant. I mean, they, they, they would, not only would they want, but it would require a review because they're, the fact is that there are a lot of people living in that area now and we can't sort of turn back the times.
Yeah, it, any use that goes in there or any, will require, will be reviewed. But I don't think it should be, should be eliminated or should be precluded offhand without the chance of something going in there that, that can be conditioned to work.
I'd like to, I hear you, Jerry, but I'd like to kind of bounce off what Joe's saying, and there is that concern. One of them is, is when we, what I think of commercial, okay, like you said, okay, you have a working boat, you know, for the wind farm that goes through. But anyway, if you say, oh, okay, we're going to make that commercial, that might open up to say, hey, we're going to have to dredge all the way down.
That's going to be, going to be a factor for its use.
Yeah, it's going to be a factor. So that might open, now, there's going to be some questions.
And let me get back to you on your, your qualifying statement. We're going to make it commercial. No, we're not going to make it commercial. It is commercial.
That's, yeah, that's where I understand it also.
That's okay, it's already.
It's already commercial.
Except for a few.
Well, only the land side is, would be residential on the upslope.
May I ask a question here?
Sure.
I'm a little confused. So this is, these are legal, legal nonconforming uses in a commercial area that's existing?
Yes, there are. I mean, in, in some instances, they've, some of those areas, those properties received approval for having a residential use kind of as a secondary use on the site, which is interesting because typically those properties go from the water's edge to the base of the bluff, that's the commercial piece, up the bluff, that's the residential piece, and then hit Main Street along there. And so they already had land that was for the residential piece, and then we approved additional residential on the commercial pieces. And there are, some of those are approvals. Some of them have been converted and whether those were done through proper permitting processes are another question. I mean, I haven't done the research. But at least I've seen, at least in one or two instances where we did approve a residential use down in the commercial area, sort of as ancillary thing, which, when you think about it, it'd make a lot of sense since a whole portion of the property is actually residential. The properties, you don't, you never want to do this, you never want to have properties that are split zoning, it always creates problems. Those properties are all split zoning.
Right, but I mean, they, I mean, I hate to generalize, but I mean, you would imagine someone buying in that area kind of knows what they're getting. A house on the waterfront.
Okay, maybe a better question is, what do you envision the operational definition of commercial going in there?
Well, so we have, I mean, so we already have definitions of all of these things. And one of the things I haven't done is compare that to, to, you know, what's, what we're looking at here. But it has zoning on it. It has, you know, it has zoning on it and there's allowed uses that are in there that are described. Some things I think may perhaps preexisted. I mean, there's structures that have been down there for a very long time.
Yeah.
So it might just have some nonconforming things down there, that might be why some of them are there. And then others were allowed to be there through permitting processes and maybe others were maybe converted over time, maybe not permitted. But that's, that's so different than anywhere in town. I mean, those situations are everywhere, so.
You know, because the, I was, I was dreaming one time that we could someday put in an eegras bank and have an eegras bank learn, as you know, there's a pilot right now, I think, up north someplace, where they're quantifying the sequestration ability of eegras and, you know, getting into the market. So what a, you know, what a opportunity because of our sand spitting and what we have here.
But that could happen, that could happen out in the water, it wouldn't be necessarily precluded. I mean, it's sort of, you know, mariculture related, it's not, there's nothing, it's not prohibited out there. I mean, we allow, you know, mariculture related type things, that's a, that's a similar type, could be a similar type thing that's out there, depending on how you dealt with it.
Yeah, I guess it maybe just means, when I think commercial, I think industrial maybe and.
See what, one of the biggest, the biggest dangers to waterfront are residents. To working waterfront, the biggest danger you have across the United States are the incursion of residents into that intersection between harbor and land. Because that's the most, you know, that's what people will pay for. And so what I see, what I see our, our job is, or, you know, what I'm, my goal is, is to protect, you know, protect the waterfront from the residential, from the tyranny of the residential area.
Commercial viability, commercial viability of the waterfront.
Yeah, so you have the commercial viability of the waterfront. So take that with a grain of salt.
No, but that makes sense. I mean, everything you've said, it kind of makes sense. Well, you know, if we want to, we have these grand plans to have offshore activities, we have to have places for these boats to go. I mean, very, very reasonable stance, so.
Maybe, probably not related, but maybe, you know, Measure D, it goes up to the power plant property, is that right? Is that where it borders? Because the other thing is, is like the big 800 pound gorilla in the room is like, you know, like when you look at the waterfront, there's the power plant, you know, and the inlet building. And, you know, I was just sitting out on one of the benches there the other day, I'm just looking at that, and I'm like, man, you know, what an opportunity, you know, you could have like, you know, what kind of stuff? Would that be something that would, the way that Measure D is worded right now, would it preclude something from a, a visitors' type center in there or some kind of a?
Well, yeah, I mean, you wouldn't probably have something along, well, a visitor's center is something different that, if it's operated by the city, we could put it anywhere. It's not necessarily, you know, inconsistent, but.
Like a eatery or whatever.
I mean, so they, you probably wouldn't be able to have, you know, create something out of that building that, that wasn't, you know, sort of industrial fishing related or along those lines. Yeah, we were actually having a conversation recently with the wind folks, the Trident Wind folks. And if, if they're successful, or if anyone's successful out there, I mean, there's a lot of what ifs to putting the wind farm in, you know, out off the coast. If they are, that they're going to need to be based, the folks that maintain them are going to need to be based in Moro Bay. And where could they base that facility? They're like, well, that intake building would be fantastic for us because it's an industrial building on the waterfront, you know? And we're like, hmm, is that Measure D compliant? I mean, I was literally, when we were sitting in the room with them, I was like, ah, it's sort of almost questionable, although it's a power generating facility and that's included in there, so I guess maybe it's okay.
But you could referendum that at a future point, I mean, right?
Yeah, but it might, it might be okay anyway because it's a similar use what was there and that's okay in that location, so.
And it is, that parcel right there is zoned industrial, it's not, you know, so.
So it probably is okay, I just, one of the things I was kicking around. But I see, because that made a lot of sense, I was like, that building, they pulled all the stuff out of there, it's mostly just empty. So I was like, that would be a good use for that, and it seemed like that would work as a good shop for the folks that are out there maintaining those things.
Scott, did you ever review the Tom Fee Plan for the, that he worked with, Diner G on, it was called, for Equabon, it was called the Plan?
I looked at that, I looked at that a while ago.
Yeah, it was a real interesting, specific plan for that area.
Yeah.
Because it titled, it was, there was a nexus of all of the renewable generating facilities that come across that plan.
Yeah.
Because the pipelines up to the Highland, tank storage, the pipelines to the, the North Mauring Field, the pipeline to the South Mauring Field, the intake, you know, the intake, and then also the, the nexus between the agriculture and, and the moral, moral, moral value, moral valley there. It, it, the plan never got a proper airing, it got really short shrift. But, you know, and then part of that too was when, how the economy tanked at that point too. But it has some gems in there that I think would, it's good to keep in mind.
I'm not going to be at the meeting on the 22nd because I've got a special trip planned for a special birthday for a special person, which I can't get out of, but I'll want to anyway. But I wanted to say, you know, I appreciate everything that, you know, Commissioner Grofio and Commissioner Lord did on this. This is a really complicated issue and it takes people who can look down at the grain, you know, like we're looking at the light bulbs and the, you know, exterior lighting tonight, and you also have to be able to scope out. And, you know, what I think has lost sometimes is, is this idea that this is a real place and it's real because of the bay. We wouldn't have the waterfront without the government spending a fortune in the 30s to start protecting the harbor. And we wouldn't have it without the government spending a fortune to dredge the entrance to come here. And we have real things here and we have real things that, just tonight, we've talked about, you know, the mariculture, the, you know, the eegras, the, you know, the entrepreneur that went under that we all, it was like a love fest in here the night we approved that guy going in there. You know, we were talking about the power plant, we're talking about the wind farm, the invention out there, not, not something being imported here like a Disneyland, the things that require the realness of this thing to come forward, we can't afford to, to take any of those off the table by artificially saying, because a few people moved into some waterfront property on abandoned commercial, that it's now residential. I love Ms. Windholtz and I love a lot of the things that she brings to meetings, but I'm sorry, if I moved into that area and I did my due diligence, it's commercial. It's commercial on a bay, one of the few bays on the West Coast. That's why this place was here. Riley bet the farm, he could get it, and he got it back when, whatever it was, 18, whatever. And everything that's happened then has been because it's a bay. And if we lose sight of that and try to turn it into an exclusive residential neighborhood, I think we've really lost the future. It's, it's, you know, I'm going to say the same thing I said about the downtown. It's a very elite place, it's becoming more elite. And it's the realities of things like that south, whatever we're going to call it, they're going to help it stay real instead of, you know, becoming a little, you know, Carmel or something like that. You know, we should err on the side of keeping the future open for invention and real things to come in and depend on the day. I'd love to see cables coming into that transformer through a building that's taking care of every wonderful thing we think can happen there with an incredible, you know, fishing waterfront on the, on the top and something else supporting the stuff down below. And I don't think that's a vision of anything other than that's what attracts people here in the first place. And as long as we keep it real, we'll be okay. And so I want to really thank Jerry for getting down and, and, you know, Commissioner Grofio for getting down in the weeds on this thing. Because I, I don't have the gift of looking at this type of thing. I don't, I've got two small plastic kayaks that are, that's my extent of waterfront, plus a couple surfers in the household. You know, and, and so I just think it's so special, we can't, we can't blow. And if we need a tribunal to identify what is in this group of elite things, you know, when, instead of military, I'm not a, I don't want to see a Navy yard here, but I don't know what the Coast Guard is considered. Is that military in terms of those things, that would we move the Coast Guard somewhere? If we've got umpteen billion dollars of infrastructure out there, is the Coast Guard going to occasionally take a different boat to go out and see what's happening out there? I don't know. But to keep the future open for new things, I think is absolutely critical. This is one of the few places this is going to happen, so we can't shut them off.
Kind of bouncing off that, I, I agree to a point, but, you know, when we open up, we have to look at the social aspects of it too. Somebody asked me about the wind farm, I go, well, you're going to have to, you know, do some, you know, how to anchor down and how this thing is, not opposed to it. However, from a social aspect, when, when you have somebody come in and say, well, they're not going to bring that many jobs here. Well, if you're not going to bring that many, that's what they said, they're not going to bring that many jobs here. Well, if you're not going to bring that many jobs here, the first recycled energy, maybe you can power our infrastructure, like our water wells and our, on our sewer plant, and have that passed on to the residents that live here, you know? Those kind of things have to, the social aspects of it, the fabric of our community has to be maintained. And what the beauty of the fabric of our community is, is the diversity, the economic diversity that we have here. We have single moms, single dads, we have, we have old people. And we want to keep that texture of the community and those, all those things have come into play.
Military activities is Coast Guard?
I think it's referring to the Coast Guard, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just picking them up to make sure we're not forgetting them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They're a major component and they're one of the reasons that we get the harbor dredged.
Oh, no, they're great. Don't get me wrong, I'm a Coast Guard fan. I just would have assumed that that was more aiming towards Navy, Army type.
I think it was just picking up Coast Guard activities, really.
But Scott, one of the reasons the Coast Guard is here is because of Diablo Canyon and response time to Diablo Canyon. So when Diablo closes, have you heard anything about, you know, plans for relocating the Coast Guard or?
I have not.
Dredging?
And they're actually working with us on plans to construct a new building, so they're not thinking that way. They're thinking, we need a better place to hang out. So, what?
I'm not a boater, but my understanding is we're actually a superior location in some ways to Avala.
Oh, yeah. Oh, by, by far.
Yeah, so if anything, they'll retreat from someplace else before they retreat from here, I would think.
Well, except, except their, the primary requirement, the primary, one of their primary purposes is, although this is designated as safe harbor, it's also as a response time on water to Diablo Canyon.
But they still have to get anything that's out there for coverage besides Diablo Canyon, and they don't have a better place to work from than here.
Yeah, but that may not be enough for them to stay, to, to support the dredging and stuff, so.
I don't think anything's happened at Diablo that doesn't require somebody to have some safety capabilities for 20 years.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to remove all those issues that potentially would be out there, some of the reasons why they're here.
People looking at the dry carcass of storage out there for about 100 million years.
Yeah.
Okay, Scott.
That was good, I really just wanted to show it to you, and then if there was anything totally off base or anything that we didn't, that wasn't touched on in here or anything, or we were, something was weird and somebody had a different idea, I wanted to kind of roll it in because I'd like to have that in our discussion that we have when we've had the boards come together, that's all. So this was great, thank you.
Okay. Okay, good. Let's see, that was, where were we? That was new business. We're at, you know, unfinished business, we have none. I think, any other planning commissioner comments, or we got ourselves into enough trouble? Okay. Scott, do you have any other comments?
Just to reiterate, we have the joint meeting on the 22nd, which is a Thursday, and it's at the Community Center, tried to say it was here, it's in the Community Center, in the multipurpose room at 6:00.
And you'll get one more chance to remind us because we have a future, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building at 209 Surf Street on March 20th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. Building at 209 Surf Street on March 20th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. And thank you, everybody.